Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumoy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to start out with recognitions and appointments. We start out with a proclamation declaring the centennial of the First World War. Now, my kids tell me I'm old as dirt, but I wasn't even around then, but it was obviously a critical moment in our planet's history. And at this point, do we have someone who's with us to come forward to accept the proclamation? Thank you.
Mayor Renner, how are you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for...
Appreciating it. Proclamation, Centennial of First World War, whereas 100 years ago, the United States of America entered the catastrophic event known as the Great War, 2000... Oh, excuse me, 2017. I thought I expected to see 1917. 2017 marks a centennial of America's declaration of war against Imperial Germany and America's entry into the First World War. And whereas more than 4 million American families sent their sons and daughters to serve in uniform during the Great War, with 116,615 soldiers giving their lives in combat, and another 200,000 being wounded. And whereas we must never forget the young men and women who made the supreme sacrifice and gave their lives for their country, and whereas we honor all those who have ever served their country during the Great War, we will never forget. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, on behalf of the city of Bloomington and the citizens of Bloomington, remember and commemorate America's entry into the Great War 100 years ago. Mayor Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, thank you very much, and thank you for your service and acceptance.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Illinois Centennial Commission, some poppy lapel pins for the council.
Oh, well, thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have School Choice Week. And do we have someone here to accept the award for school choice? Come on forward. Good to see you. Thanks. Proclamation declaring January 21st through 27th, 2018, as National School Choice Week. Whereas all children in Bloomington should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Bloomington recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Bloomington to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Bloomington, and whereas Bloomington is home to a multitude of high-quality traditional public schools, public magnet schools, private charter schools, and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Bloomington has many high-quality teaching professionals in traditional public schools, public magnet schools, charter schools, and non-public schools who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise the awareness and need for effective educational options that challenge and motivate our students to succeed in the future. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, do hereby recognize January 21st through the 27th, 2018, as National School Choice Week. Congratulations, and thank you so much for all you do. Next, we have a presentation of Heritage Awards to the following people and individuals. I wonder if they could be prepared to come forward, as well as the President of the Historical Society, Brad Williams, Fred Wohrab, and then Bloomington Lodge Number 43, Ancient Free and Accepted Masons, and Diana Krieg and Dawn Peters. And I'm going to come forward with these.
I am Sherri Grayling, and I am the chairperson of the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood I wasn't head of something else, anyway.
Or just somebody who wandered off.
Right, exactly. All right. This is a Heritage Award for Preservation Excellence, and it is being given to Bloomington Lodge Number 43 in recognition of the restoration of the property located at 302 East Jefferson Street. Signed on behalf of the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, January 22nd, 2018. This award is the Heritage Award for Preservation Excellence, in recognition of the landscape restoration of the property located at 409 East Grove Street. Signed on behalf of the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, January 22nd, 2018, is being given to Diana Krieg and Dawn Peters. These next two awards are actually something we would only tend to give one of in a year. However, when we ended up with two people of such magnitude as these two people have in the preservation community, we couldn't give an award to one person and then not the other. So they share this. They're both our Preservationist of the Year this year. This is basically a lifetime achievement type of an award. So that's exactly what this is. We have two people. The first is Brad Williams, and it's for his years of service as chairperson of the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, giving advice, support, and advocacy for the cause of historic preservation. And he's done this as a lifetime of service. And so, Brad, congratulations. And joining Brad, as sharing that designation as Preservationist of the Year for his years of service promoting historic preservation throughout the city of Bloomington, is Fred Wohrab. Thank you so much, Mayor Renner.
so that everyone knows if you were not at the Bloomington Martin Luther King Junior Award that was produced by the Bloomington-Normal Human Relations Commission, Jordan Blythe was one of the I Have a Dream Award youth, Lorenzo Marshall, Xavier Higgins, and I Have a Dream Adult Award, and Andre Hursey, I Have a Dream Adult Award. And I'm going to turn this over to Nicole.
Thank you. So on behalf of the Bloomington Human Relations Commission, I would like to recognize this year's Dr. Martin Luther King Award recipients. It is a tradition that the Bloomington Human Relations Commission identifies youth and adult citizens who will be honored for their part in furthering the dream of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And we do have two of the recipients with us this evening, and so as I say their name, I would like to ask them to come forward, and if they want to say a few minutes, I hope that's okay with you, say a few things. I will start with Jordan Blythe. She is unable to be with us this evening, but it is my pleasure to announce Bloomington's I Have a Dream Award recipient, Jordan Blythe. Unfortunately, she is not able to be here this evening. Ms. Blythe is a senior at University High School, where she's proven herself to be an upstanding student and leader. In addition to her academic success, she serves as student body president and participates in band, theater, choir, and the award-winning speech team. One of her proudest accomplishments is helping to found the Black Student Union, where she works with others to raise awareness regarding social justice issues. Outside of the classroom, Jordan enjoys working with Jack and Jill of America, volunteering with Home Sweet Home Ministries, Home of Hope, and Serve Plus One, a nonprofit she helped found. Her positive attitude and energy are wonderful attributes that help her find success in these and many other endeavors. Jordan exemplifies the qualities of a young leader and has a very bright future. So on behalf of Jordan, thank you. And if I can ask Elaine Marshall to stand and come forward, please. In the Adult Award category, I'm pleased to announce the 2018 Award winner is not Elaine, but is her late husband, Mr. Lorenzo Marshall. Here to see this recognition on his behalf. Many of you may remember Lorenzo, an active volunteer in numerous professional and community organizations. For years, he coordinated the annual Juneteenth celebration, working tirelessly to bring the community together in observance of this special day. At State Farm Insurance, where he was employed for 40 years, he took pride in the mission of the African-American Forum Employee Resource Group. His passion for educating, mentoring, and helping everyone feel welcomed touched many lives. A dedicated volunteer, he served as president of the Black Data Processing Association, where he worked to develop learning opportunities to expose students to new technologies. His dedication to helping others find their potential will leave a lasting and positive impact on our community. It is with great honor that we recognize the memory of Mr. Lorenzo Marshall as part of our 2018 Martin Luther King Jr. Awards Program.
Just wanted to say that Lorenzo was born and raised in Chicago. He came to the Normal community to attend Illinois State University, and he lived in the Bloomington community, which was very inviting to him. And so we stayed here, where he made a positive impact for civic activity and mentoring and all the other things that she just said. So, but I just wanted to let you know, he was here all this time, and I miss him, and he did wonderful things. So, thank you all very much for the honor.
Thank you.
It is also my pleasure to announce that the Normal I Have a Dream Award winner for the Youth Award is Mr. Xavier Higgins. Unfortunately, Xavier is not able to be here this evening due to a work conflict, but I do want to recognize Mr. Higgins is a student at Normal Community West High School, where he is described as a compassionate, bright, optimistic individual. While he has proven himself to be a dedicated student athlete, his commitment to serving others is exceptional. Xavier has complemented his education with numerous volunteer and leadership experiences, dedicating time to the Best Buddies Program, the Not in Our School Club, and the Freshman Mentoring Program. His commitment to service above self is appreciated by his peers, his school, and our community. And now I'm going to ask Jim Carsh to join me for the last recognition, which is certainly not the least.
We've got to brag on our own.
We've got to brag on our own. So Andre Hursey, if you can please come forward. Where's the tuxedo?
He looked good on Saturday.
Thank you, thank you. I look great tonight.
Even better on Saturday.
And I think, if it's all right with you, Mayor Renner, can I invite Jade and Amaya to come up too, his wife and his daughter?
Absolutely.
Is that okay? Okay. So, Mr. Hursey, I am pleased to announce that Andre has been selected as the Town of Normal's 2018 Award winner. Mr. Hursey has a consistent and positive influence in the lives of many young people. His passion and dedication to serving others is truly remarkable. Inspired by the efforts of his mother, Andre has taken it upon himself to be a positive mentor and serve those in need. For years, he has volunteered and assisted many organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club and the Western Avenue Community Center. He's also a familiar face at Bloomington Junior High School and Normal Community West High School, where he regularly volunteers. Earlier this year, he established the Jewel Foundation, a nonprofit organization that is helping children reach their potential in and out of the classroom. And of course, he is one of our distinguished solid waste employees down in Public Works with Mr. Carsh, and so we wanted to take a moment to recognize Andre and his effort.
Well, thank you again. I am still looking pretty good tonight, despite what the mayor said, but... First of all, I just want to give honor to God, who is the head of my life. I'm so thankful. My beautiful wife, and my daughter, who has been... and actually, my nephew, believe it or not, Creighton, has been so instrumental in this foundation. And I'm just going to share a quick highlight. It was so fitting for me to be the recipient this year of the MLK Award, and with the foundation, I'm taking 10 of my youth, juniors and seniors, that does real well in school, and grades are pretty good, and their attendance at the Jewel Foundation is great. So with the help of Eastview Christian Church, they actually sponsored this trip to Atlanta, Georgia. So I'm the MLK recipient, and the kids will get an opportunity to visit the MLK Memorial. So I am truly blessed with the efforts from Eastview Christian Church, along with many other supporters here in the community. And last but not least, my mother. Born and raised right here in Bloomington, Illinois, I grew up right up the hill, Woodhill Housing Authority. And I'll tell you, that was some of the best living a young man like myself could ask for, and my mother planted that seed years ago. I think we were probably only one that grew up in the Bloomington Housing Authority. My mother would have landscaping, kids would come over, and she would literally have the kids help plant seeds, and plant flowers and things of that nature, and I would look at her like, hey, mother. And she would give them money. Back then, there used to be a Clark gas station that used to sit up on the corner. She would give them money. I'd be like, Mom, why are we giving them money? But lo and behold, to me, God set me right there in front of her while she did this. And next thing you know, years later, I'm in my calling, just because God placed that on her heart and had her son sit there while she did for others. And I still remember headshots of mothers, single mothers that were growing up with kids. It takes a village to raise a child, and at the end of the day, I'm a part of that village, and that's why I continue to do what I'm doing for the youth in my foundation and others. So I thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before the council and everyone else. But yeah, thejewelfoundation@gmail.com, so I am looking for supporters. Anybody want to help out? Hey, because this is a community deal. This is not just me. This is about us and Bloomington Normal. So if anyone would like to speak to me afterwards, I'm available. I will make myself available. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
And my wife loves you both.
And then we have the... I don't know if he's here. I believe he may have had scheduling conflicts, but Matthew Machinsky to the Board of Library Trustees. Matthew? Let's see Matthew in the audience. Okay, now we move on to public comment, and you have up to three minutes. And I'm going to read the names in groups of three. We have up to 30 minutes. I think we have plenty of time this evening, so we are starting at 7:23. We have Tyson Moore, Gary Lambert, and Glenn Ludwig, and Donna Boland. Those are the first four. And then if you could be prepared to speak, Tyson Moore.
So as you all are aware, Diana Howman brought together a group of citizens to review the budget for ideas on how we could address the budget situation. The group was Glenn Ludwig, Donna Boland, Mike Fitzgerald, and me. So we... she presented you a summary of that last week, and we're going to come up here in public comment today and highlight each one point that we thought was particularly important for you to consider. What I'm going to talk about is a general principle that we really focused on, which was that city function should be based on dedicated revenue sources, and that this includes operations, debt service, and foreseeable capital needs. It's important to have a plan for all those things when you're looking at a certain function. And with capital needs, think about what role that the revenue can play from the city and what role that private fundraising can bring to bear. So I've got a few instances where I think this principle could be beneficial. First one will probably get some eye rolls, because we talked about it a lot, but it is trash pickup. It clearly draws your attention when you look at the budget, and I'm glad that you guys are thinking about that, because the operation does not support itself in that instance. The revenue that is coming in for it is less than the expenses, results in a loss every year. So you need to either reduce the service on that or increase the revenue to support itself. Another set of functions support themselves operationally that we saw, but it's not sufficient to address the foreseeable capital needs. And an example that we saw was golf. So we talk about how golf is self-supporting operationally, but there really should be some plan for those predictable capital needs that have to go into it. Now, I know that there's a group, a private group, that are thinking about fundraising for that, and from what I understand, it's unclear whether they've really implemented that plan or not. So there needs to be a little bit more of a push there to actually get that to be implemented, because that's the kind of framework, I think, that is the way of the future, to have the people who are motivated and dedicated about a certain thing be the ones that go out and try to raise that extra funding to support it. City revenue is flat, and there's not going to be enough money to go around for everything that we would like to do. So you have to focus on the things that have to be done, and if there's other services that a segment of the population wants to have, then they can try to pitch in, and with their time and money. If that's not available, then maybe there's not a need for that thing. With the few seconds I have left, I just wanted to really urge you to hire Steve Rasmussen as a city manager. The entire group was really impressed by his professionalism, his passion, and his knowledge. And we think that he's the right person to drive out the changes that we need and the discipline that we need. And you have a candidate that's ready and willing to serve, standing right in front of you, so I don't think that doing a search with a consultant is going to be working right.
Your time's up. You have time. Thank you. Gary Lambert, and then Glenn Ludwig.
Just adding on to what the gentleman before me was speaking of, see, tonight is one of my favorite topics, the budget. I know I sound like a broken record. I've spoken in front of you many times, carrying the same message. From my perspective, we don't have a revenue problem. We have a spending problem. If this council would take a pledge, or in your actions, you don't have to say it, no new programs unless they're funded by the group who sponsors, as the gentleman earlier spoke, no new personnel additions. We've come to a point, and it's a good idea to have these programs fund for themselves, but where you're using the general fund, there's never any lack of money to bring new staff on board, to continue to pour it into the Coliseum, into BCPA, in grandiose ideas. This city has seen them all before. It's striking how similar some of the arguments are as to when the Coliseum was being advocated coming on 15 years ago. But as you're going through this process, please try to curb your appetite for new expenditures and try and live within your means. Thank you.
Glenn Ludwig, Donna Boland, and Mike Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. As you know, I'm part of that ad hoc group of four. I believe the current budget development process for fiscal 2019 or 2019 should be viewed as a first step of a several-year challenge that needs to march to a destination of having every year be a balanced budget, including the capital expenditures and so forth that are required. It seems like those kind of get left out, and really, you don't have in my mind a true budget that's balanced unless you can accommodate those types of things. We can't change the past. We can kind of learn from it, though, if we pay attention. I would suggest that there were times in the past, and I wasn't even here probably when this was really at its height, that there was unbridled optimism and confidence across this entire community and this region about the future. And that has kind of melted away a little bit, and we're coming back to sometimes some raw reality that it's not bad to be optimistic, and it's not bad to be confident, but we have to deal with the raw reality, and I think reality is arriving. Our city needs to get back to the basics, and that's a theme you're going to hear, I think, from several people, being... having a tight focus on the essentials, and Tyson mentioned a couple of those things. I won't go over them again. I do have confidence, though, that Jim Carsh and his team will do a good job on figuring out how to take care of the solid waste and so forth. We need to... we need to focus on prioritization. We need to think about picking up efficiency. Governments are not necessarily highly efficient, and I think there's a real, great opportunity to improve on that. So I would think that would... should be a focal point. The other thing I would like to comment is, is I too would urge you to take action in naming Steve Rasmussen your... our city manager. I mean, you've seen him work, we've seen him work, I have a lot of confidence in him. I don't... wouldn't think there would be any reason why you folks couldn't share that confidence, and I'd like to see you follow up and kind of strap on your decisive skill set and make a decision to book Steve as our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Boland, Mike Fitzgerald, and then Nancy Marciniek.
I'm Donna Boland. I live in Ward Two, and I also am a member of the ad hoc committee that Alderman Howman put together. And the group hopes that you will consider our perspectives as you begin your discussions, and we'd be happy to discuss our work with you if you'd like. I brought along some visuals. I brought along some visuals for you to look at. The first one, basically, it has a solid waste driver, but it could apply to any employee that has a median income. And it was present, it was stretched out by an actuarial to see the difference. Cost of living for, has only gone up 1%, whereas the raises for the city have gone up 2% to 3%. So there's a discrepancy there. On the second chart, I put together healthcare. Mr. Fruin had been mentioning about that many times. And if you look, both charts are, represent the same information, but for the city, the city employee only pays 25% of their premium, whereas in the private sector, they pay 40%. And an individual, or someone with ACA, pays 100% of the premium. And then out-of-pocket expense for the city is $3,000. For a private, it's $12,000, and for an individual, it's $11,000. So you can see there's a very large discrepancy. And that actually ends up costing the city more, of course, but it puts an extra burden on the private sector, because they have to pay that out of their pocket, leaving less ability to spend and generate revenue. And then the next chart is the bell curve, and that basically is an economic curve for revenue versus tax rate. And considering our revenue is flat, I'm interpreting this curve that we are on the right side, the diminishing return portion. And in the group, I was focusing on cost-saving, cost recovery. I don't really want to look at increases, if at all possible. And then the last chart I have here is the pension funding, which of course is mandated. And taxes were increased on utilities in 2014 to accelerate the pension funding, but for some reason, after 2016, it has gone flat. And there's two conclusions that I come to. One is that revenue was redirected, or that there's, the growth is dismal in the city, because usage, utilities indicates usage, which means nobody's here to use it. So if you have any questions or want to talk to me further, I'd be happy.
Thank you, Donna. Mike Fitzgerald, Nancy, and then Julian Sigler. And last but not least, it'll be Charlotte Alvarez.
Evening, everyone. I'm Mike Fitzgerald. I live at 1805 Dunraven. I'm part of the group that Diane put together, and I'd just like to emphasize that we're not here to do any placing blame, but to hopefully make some suggestions and different ways to look at a budget and follow through. In looking at the 13 items proposed for reduction, a couple of common themes surfaced for me. Those dealt with overcoming the belief that more resources are always required to accomplish tasks of the jobs per department, and the difficulty ensuring the collection of such things as fines, fees, taxes, et cetera owed to the city, which is an essential responsibility of many city jobs. Attending previous council meetings with city manager Hales, whenever tasks to be accomplished arose, it seemed to me the prevailing attitude was, we need additional resources to accomplish these tasks, rather than one of, let's put our nose to the grindstone and figure out ways to ensure what we are required to do gets accomplished. Coinciding with the aforementioned is the requirement for monthly reporting to the council on task completions. This requires departments to establish measurable objectives, including starting and ending dates. In a couple of instances, speaking with city staff, the impression I was left with was one of end dates in all cases may not be established or adhered to, which impacted the collection of the fees, the taxes, the fines, et cetera. This process, procedure should also be used for department budgets. Forecast by month, a plus or minus report with the rationale as to why the budget was overspent or underspent, where the shortages will be made up, and/or a plus amount, and where the expenditures did not meet forecast amounts, where the plus dollars go, and what they will be programmed for. The interim city manager is well aware of budget processes. Monthly reports managing the ups and downs of expenditures versus budgeted dollars and available revenues, and ensuring the job gets done. He is forward-thinking in this process and the quality-controlling of the process. He understands changing attitudes from what was to what is, and impacting attitudes in a positive manner towards changing ways of doing business. That's getting more bang for the buck. In closing, I hope what I've stated makes sense, and could be helpful to city budget and department operations, and I further recommend the council immediately remove the interim title from interim city manager Steve Rasmussen's title, and install him as the Bloomington City Manager. He is the right man for the job, and it would be a waste of taxpayer dollars to hire a consultant and go through a long, drawn-out hiring process. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. Nancy, and then Julian, and Charlotte.
My name is Nancy Marciniek. I live in Bloomington, and I want to talk about the downtown catalyst project. I always try to listen carefully. On occasion, I've been known to listen with rose-colored ears, and cheeks too, sometimes. But from what I heard at the special session, there's more, the positives on this project far outweigh the negatives. I like the cooperative nature of the project, because I think it speaks well of government entities. In general, I think cooperation speaks well of people. I like the multipurpose aspect, because I think it's functional, and I think it could represent cost savings, although I wouldn't know how to plug in numbers to that. I like the central location. I believe public investment does spur private investment, commercial and residential. I believe when you couple public and private investment, it's good for the economy, and that's not feel-good economics, that's good public policy. I believe a well-planned, well-executed project has a huge aesthetic value for downtown, and I believe the linchpin for the aesthetic value is the library. I don't have any professional or technical expertise to advise anybody on the kind of decisions that need to be made for a project of this kind. I'm not an investor. I'm not a business owner. I'm not a property owner. These people are stakeholders in a way I am not. My only stake in this project is a stake everybody has in an attractive, thriving community. And with that in mind, I would further say that quality public spaces and quality public services are assets as well as tools. They are the fulcrum that becomes the lever that becomes the fulcrum that becomes the lever that lifts the load. And I hope that's not too tedious, because I have a tendency to get tedious sometimes. In that sense, the whole of downtown is not only an asset, but also a tool. And one of the questions that occurs to me, that does occur to me, is that should this project go forward, should people decide that it's a good project? Has there been any preliminary thought at least given to a use, good use for the old building? Because we don't need another empty, deteriorating building, so, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, Julian, and then Charlotte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Julian Sigler, 904 West Grove Street in Bloomington. There's been a lot of debate over the bulk waste, and I'm just wondering, as a resident, it generates $6 million. Now, if that's incorrect, I'm sure staff will correct me, but if you're generating that much amount of money, how are you going to justify cutting that service and then not giving the savings back to the residents? And if you go to privatization, you can look around, and they'll, they're doing the same thing we used to do. They have a rear-loading packer with a laborer on the back. They don't use the trucks that we currently use. They're too expensive. I stood here a while back before we went to automation and told you guys that. Nobody wanted to listen, so now we're back into this, that these are too expensive, we got to find another way to do it. Let's cut the fleet in half. Let's get rid of more equipment. While we start doing that, we still got to use it for snow removal, we still got to use it for leaf removal. I don't know, maybe the Karch will expound on the three shifts, but I don't understand where we're running three shifts at. So that might be something we can get figured out. I'd just like to say that, you know, I've lived in this city all my life. I've seen it change over and over again. I mean, if the private sector is doing rear-loading packers with one guy on the back, I see no sense why the city cannot do the same thing. Let's get rid of, if you're talking about making the savings, let's get rid of a vehicle that's only lasting four, five years maybe tops, and you can have a rear-loading packer that'll last you at least 10. I know for a fact some of them lasted 13. That's a cost savings right there. And you don't have to use two guys on the back, you can use one guy on the back. And I just have to say that we already have a problem with illegal dumping, and cutting the service even more, you're going to start seeing it. I'm sure a lot of you guys don't see it from neighborhoods you live in, but I see it in my neighborhood. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Julian. Charlotte?
My name's Charlotte Alvarez. I'm from the Immigration Project. Good to see everyone again. I'm here to just make a brief correction of testimony by the Immigration Project at the city council meeting on December 18th, 2017. We presented information regarding a local individual facing deportation. We believed it to be accurate at the time, based upon numerous conversations with family members, a due diligence search of publicly available records with the Executive Office of Immigration Review, and McLean County Courts. At the December meeting, Chief Hefner requested more information about the individual, and upon further investigation, we discovered the individual was not initially arrested by the Bloomington Police Department, but rather a different law enforcement agency within Bloomington Normal, and is now being detained and faces a high probability of deportation. I've informed Chief Hefner of this inadvertent misattribution to his department, and I'm correcting the record in the same form here today. This case is still an example of individuals facing deportation in Bloomington, and the fear of police interacting that we see with our clients. And as I discussed with the Chief Hefner, it is still a position of the Immigration Project that a clear welcoming city ordinance is necessary to promote public safety, and we continue to remain committed to working with the city council to come up with a measure that helps all of us feel safer in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Okay. At this point, we move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move to, to make, I'll make that motion, Mayor. Sorry.
Okay. Move by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. And as soon as I start vote, okay, there we go. Okay.
Mayor Renner.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that with the addendum that was put out for item 78A?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you for that correction, including the addendum.
Including the addendum. Yes, correct. And I'm missing... Oh, there we go. Okay. Why isn't it showing? There we go. The motion carries 9 to 0. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move right along to item 78A, which is a presentation and an update on the fiscal year 2019 big-picture budget presented by Steve Rasmussen, our interim city manager. A 45-minute presentation and up to a 45-minute council discussion. We can certainly, this is only the beginning, well, it's really not the beginning of the process, but we're, we're starting a little bit early, and Mr. Rasmussen is doing things perhaps a little bit different than our previous city manager, and he's giving us some possible, or a possible scenario of a balanced budget. Before he ultimately presents his budget, he's going to listen to what we have to say before putting together the budget that he would put together, and typically we receive in February. Ultimately, we then have a couple months to discuss this, and present and finalize some budget in April. And obviously, there are trade-offs we know that we're going to need to make, and the more specific that we can be, and I think that's part of what the interim city manager's attempt here was, is to say, here are some pieces, here are some movable parts. If you want to remove this, great, how do we fill it in as we move forward? Is that a fair statement, Mr. Rasmussen?
Exactly. Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay, the first thing I'd like to do is talk about the schedule here, and I think you have, if you don't have a copy of it, I think we will get one to you. But what I wanted to do here was show the end in mind, and that is, at the very bottom of this list, you'll see that the legal deadline for the submission of the budget is Monday, April 30th, 2018, and that is, that is a day that we have a city council meeting, so we could actually vote on it on that day if we, if we needed to. We, of course, don't want to have to wait until that last date, and so I'm going to walk us back, using a back-planning method here, through this calendar, and then I'm going to show the slides that we showed before, and then ask each one of the staff members who has some input on each one of these budget items to come back and tell what the implication on that is. And I think we'll finish all of that in about 45 minutes, and then we would welcome your input on it. And as the mayor indicated, what we're trying to do is do this early on so that we could get the big picture earlier in the process, as had been requested by some members of the city council. And we, so we started this a little bit early. The first thing we did, we had the fall retreat on November 4th, and just to review a little bit, at that time, we did get some input from the council about some things we should look at to perhaps begin to balance the budget, and we knew we had about a $3 million deficit to look at then. Then on Wednesday, December 20th, we gave the big picture in the BCPA, and if you remember, we had four slides there, and we're going to use those same four slides here to go from, but we only need to show two at a time, since you all have seen that big picture before. So now I'm going to go and walk us back on the deadlines we've got. It seems like we have a lot of time, but it isn't all that much, even though we started about two months earlier this year. So first of all, we have the legal deadline, which is Monday, April 30th, but we don't want to have to do it that day if we can avoid it, because it goes into effect the next day, which would be May 1st. So we have proposed a budget adoption a month before that, Monday council meeting, April 9th. As a backup, if we haven't quite resolved it by then, we can do it on April 23rd. But those three days in April will be the critical dates to finish that. If you come back a little bit, March 15th, we have a legal deadline for the city manager to present the proposed budget. And the reason for that is because we need to have a public hearing before that. So what we've done is we've moved the proposed budget hearing up to Monday, March 13th. And in order to do that, we have to have the proposed budget to the printers so that we can print those budget books by March 1st. So as you see, our timeline is pretty much taken up there. We have a requirement by city code for the city manager to present a proposed budget, and that's on February 26th. And that will be about a 10-page detailed overview of the budget. Now, in order to get that to you, then I will need to get as much input from all of you by then as I can, so when we put things in there, we're pretty sure that we've got a consensus on those things, and we're not putting something in there that's going to be dead on arrival. So what that means is we've got about a month to do that. The next council meeting on February 12th, I would ask you to come back and bring anything to us that you have. If you say, this just isn't going to work, and we don't want that on there, a show of hands, we'll wipe that out. And if you say, we really need to have this in there, we'll put that in. And if you say, we really need to have this in there, we'll put that in. So we can get some input on that at the next council meeting, so I can bring back the presentation of the proposed budget on February 26th. So that brings us to tonight. And what I've got up there is the proto-budget discussion, and by proto-budget, I mean, we're going to give you a prototype of a budget tonight, which shows you what a balanced budget might look like. If you all like that, you could just vote for it and say, we'll accept it, and there you have it. I don't think that will happen, but at least what it does is it gives you a prototype to go from. And as the mayor said, you can take things out of that, and you can put things back in, but at least, we've given you a model of a balanced budget to start out from. I'd emphasize that the things we're going to talk about here tonight aren't, we're not, we're neither recommending them, nor are we dismissing them. We're putting them all out as items that we might use. Because what's happened is, when we came back to you before in December, we now went back to all of you, and we asked you what different things we could get and what things we could put into. We got as much input as we could from you. We got input from, from town hall meetings. We got input from individual ad hoc budget groups from the citizens. We got input back from you, and we have some things up that represent much that the city has been talking about. Again, I tell you, these are not our recommendations nor things that we dismiss. They're just options to balance the budget. So I'm going to start going through those a little bit here. And if you remember, these are the first two slides. These are the slides that you saw on the left-hand side of the, of the presentation we gave at the BCPA. On the left-hand side, you have this, you have a copy of this in your, in your packet that was, was passed out earlier. If you look at Exhibit 1, it shows the $2.9 million deficit that we were looking at. And when the council presented us with some options to try to change those things and to try to fix them back in, in the retreat on, in November 4th, we took that as a, as a challenge to the staff to come back and see if we could, what we could do to balance that budget. And a number of them, some things add, some things that we cut out, and some things add some things that are cost recovery. But the staff has gone back, and we have duly achieved that goal of finding those $2.9 million in cuts. And over on the right-hand side of the, of Exhibit 2 there, where it shows those different items, we've got a 2A and a 2B and a 2C. And I'm going to ask each one of the department heads that are responsible to come up and give each of those for about, about five minutes. The first one is, is solid waste. That's the biggest item in the budget. And I'll go down through this. You gave us 13. I've only got nine here, and that was because, as I had mentioned at the, in December, there's some that there was just, that we couldn't get anything out of it. There wasn't anything to, to be gotten from. And I'll mention a couple of these when we get on that, that don't show very much revenue collection, but we'll come back and talk to them all. So I want to start out with the first one, and that is the big one, and that is solid waste. I've asked Jim to hold himself to about 10 minutes, and everybody else will get about five minutes. We're going to show you a proposal of how we can get that $1.1 million. We've been working on this for probably five years, and it may come the time now that it's time to, to close this gap. I'm going to ask Jim to come up and give his presentation to you on that now.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. With 10 minutes to go, I will go quickly with this. What we're talking about tonight is much of the same thing that we have discussed in the past with solid waste. The options are the same. They really come down to, we can raise fees, we can change our service level, we can outsource. All of those are different ideas. Tonight, we will spend the majority of our time talking about potential options to change the service level of how to bridge that gap. I'll start off by saying, we don't know what we don't know. As we talk about these changes tonight, we are making the best guesses that we can to change service levels, and we will do everything we can to meet these. But until changes approved are made, it'll be difficult. We'll do what we can. Let's first talk about the quality that we have for the product we receive for our citizens. We do an excellent job. I mean, we, we really do. The quality received by our citizens with our solid waste program is bar none. It's just excellent, and we're really proud of that. We have, we saw tonight, one of our, our solid waste workers, Andre Hershey, received an award. We've seen in the past, Delvar Dobson has stood up before, before you. Mario as well. Mario Davis has also received support in both locally, and so this, these are things to be proud of within our community, and we're thankful for that. So let's talk about the, the numbers. So from a numbers standpoint, we raise pretty consistently now with the fees being what they are, about $6.2 million. We have expenses in the range of 7.4. That is all, it really is just over $1.1 million is what it comes out to, of a gap that we would need to bridge. Again, the multiple ways to do that. Tonight, we're going to focus on reductions in our service to accomplish that. So let's talk, first, focus on bulk waste. We have an excellent bulk, bulk waste program. Whenever you put something at the curb, it is one bucket or less, we collect it. Every other week, it is, that is a great program. Throughout the entire year, we provide that service. One of the ways that we can bridge this gap, we can look at free spring and fall collection. We, we change our service level to collecting one time for each property in the spring and one time in the fall. The way we can try to offset that, to provide still a good customer service for our citizens, is at our drop-off facility throughout the year, provide expanded hours and be able to provide it free. If you can get it to our drop-off facility, we'll collect it for free and take that from you. So that's one way to, to offset that. Another way that we would try to still provide a good service level for folks is, even if it's this time of year, it's not spring, it's not fall, it is winter right now. And so if somebody still had a couch, they couldn't bring it in, we still could provide a full cost recovery to going to your site to pick it up. We'd have to determine what that cost is, but we would have the mindset of a full cost recovery. At the drop-off facility right now, we use our own, our own drivers to load up the trucks. We use end loaders to load up the trucks, haul that off. We could use roll-offs. We've talked to some of our vendors. That would save on some of our labor costs in that way. Knuckle booms are another possibility some communities use for, you know, whenever you change your service level. All of these things, though, we don't want to make, you know, sweeping changes within one year. That would, that would have, it would be difficult to do. Let's talk about brush. Brush is more difficult. You have trees that are in the public right-of-way. Those are city trees. You know, the, the service level is, is, is high from our citizens. And so with that, you know, we can talk about brush once a month, once per quarter. One of the things staff would be proposing is, we try to utilize the GPS, the AVL, those Automatic Vehicle Location, Location Equipment already installed in our vehicles to produce more of an on-demand type collection. We are currently, right now, because of this conversation, trying to look at vendors, even such as Verizon Netfleet, who provides their current service, or place, other places that provide some of those routing slot-type software that, you know, like a UPS would use. Many other places use that type of routing software. We are still evaluating how well that could be done, but now that we have that technology in the trucks, let's leverage it to its fullest extent. Let's move on. One of the facets that we've, we've talked about, the mayor and city manager have talked about, is with no layoffs. That's, that is one way that, that tries to help minimize impact to our employees. We would do reduction of staff through attrition. And so one, one of the ways we would look to do that is to try to say, let's shift. We have a lot of need in our streets area. I think everybody can agree that there is a lot of needs in our streets, and if you've heard me talk about that before. Well, you shift our employees over during that time period, so we would reorganize and allow and restructure so we have more of our employees going towards streets and have that needed work on there. And the other facet that we know will be impacted is enforcement and fines. We will have to revisit that and have to make sure that we are really doing the best we can with enforcement, because we know there will be some people that will need to be encouraged to comply with bringing that in. We talked with the town of Normal about other possible intergovernmental cooperation as well. My counterpart over there, we've talked about, can you partner and have multiple different community drop-offs so that you can share some of that? There might be some cost savings of that as well. They also are looking at what type of solid waste accommodations they can make to bridge budget gaps. And with all of this, it is good for you to know, we did reach out to the employees this last week. We met with six groups of three to five of our employees in solid waste. We solicited feedback from them on this and, you know, trying to get, is there other things that we're missing? There were some facets they brought into that, really allowed us, we're talking about, you know, brush chipping or other facets that maybe we can look at doing some things in-house. We're going to try to incorporate as well. But it is important to say that from a, from a union perspective, the union has been clear that none of these are recommended from their perspective. They definitely like the, the service level that we are at. But let's talk about one other option that we, that was discussed publicly, we're still working through. Shift splitting of our garbage and recycle collection. A unique idea that was, was brought up. How do you do that? You know, so when you talk about, yes, maybe, you know, having the number of vehicles sounds great, you can't, you can't perfectly halve the number of vehicles in an ideal world. They're going to break down more frequently. You do have to have more backups. But in essence, the potential hope is that maybe you can save some, some additional funding. You know, each of those pieces of equipment, those automated garbage trucks are anywhere from $325,000 to $360,000. Anytime you can save money on equipment, that is, that is a wonderful thing. We actually talked to the Allied Waste Republic, our transfer station that we bring the material to, and they, they would actually be able to stay open longer to allow us to do some of this. That was one of the concerns we had. And so that was one of the disadvantages that we thought might be an issue. Another issue still might be concern from citizens about late-night collection. Let's, let's be honest, people are concerned about coming up to your house and trying to do some of that collection. While the majority of our collection does not back up using those, the backup beepers, there will be times when even that would happen. There's some dead-end streets we have to service. And so those type of things, we can try to minimize, but the, what we're trying to do is look to have any savings that we can with our current operation. So the other option is, again, you know, we, we just wanted to hit briefly, the fees can be increased to accommodate our current service level that we have. That can be done through a staggered, one-size-fits-all, or it can also be through a staggered-tiered system like we have currently. The, the last thing that I'll say is that anytime we deviate from some of these different changes, you know, so I know there's, there's always that desire, hey, can we, can we do bulk wa, bulk waste collection four times a year? Can we, can we do on-demand bulk waste? Every time we'll do that, that, any of those can be done. Our governing body sets the service level. If we're trying to bridge that $1.1 million gap, that's where we're going to continue to try to struggle to, to make sure we meet that. So all of this is the best information we can come up with. We've tried to look at the budget. Where do we think we can have some savings? For example, we have one laborer in solid waste right now that is vacant. You know, we are, we are waiting on filling that position until decisions are made through the budget process. We want to make sure we don't fill that, and, and then this council makes a decision. We'll try to capture any savings that we can, but, but this is the, where we're looking at for a solid waste program. So hopefully, that'll give you some additional things to talk about. I think I'm under my 10-minute mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you go back?
You can go back, one.
Okay. So, so thank you very much, Jim. And what I wanted to point out here is the council has the full range of options here. We could simply find the $1.1 million by taking out a fund balance way off on one extreme, or we could totally get out of the solid waste business way out on the other extreme. The council has the full range of options, and we've talked about this many times. What we have tried to do here today, though, is to show you an option which would keep nearly the same level of service, to reduce most of the deficit, and to keep most of our employees doing what they're doing at the same thing. That's kind of the middle road, but I want to emphasize that the council has the options of, of doing anything that they want, and this is one that we've worked on now, we'd like to give you. The next thing is, is vacancy savings. We put $500,000 into the budget on that, and I'm going to go ahead and ask Nicole to come up and talk about how we might do that.
Thank you. Good evening. So as Steve mentioned, we did list out $500,000 as a potential savings target on the reduction of potential vacancies in the future. I do want to highlight for you, on your slide, it reads total full-time employees at 656. It needs to read total full-time equivalents. So scratch the employees from your mind and put in equivalents, and I'm going to explain to you the difference. So I want to make sure you understand, a full-time equivalent is really another way of saying the number of hours that our employees work citywide over a year as compared to what a full-time employee would work at 40 hours a week. And so in other words, we have full-time employees and seasonal employees working the equivalent of 656 full-time employees in the city.
If I could, I know we're not doing, question, if I could just for the macro-level record here.
Yes.
In 2009, we were at roughly 850 full-time equivalents, and we went to 750, so we are down about 200 full-time equivalent employees.
I don't know what the 2008 numbers are, if that's what you recall.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I can find out for you if you'd like to confirm that.
I have it in my office.
Sure, okay. So in other words, when you take into consideration the fact that our average salary across the city is $50,000, our attrition rate is $5,000, you could experience a potential savings of $500,000 if you did not look to fill approximately 10 positions. And again, we do not have a crystal ball to tell you exactly which positions those would be. What we would do is to continue to really take a very critical look at each and every vacancy that comes forward and decide whether or not that is something that we need to replace. We do that anyway, so we would just continue to do that as a potential future savings for you. On the next slide, items that I would ask for you to consider. This thing is so touchy. All right, I'm going to go to the keyboard. These numbers are very fluid. So for example, our seasonal employee head count sits at approximately 360 employees currently. Again, head count, not FTE. That number is going to quickly jump here in the next couple of weeks to, to months when we start to staff for our summer parks and rec positions. And so I want to, want you to keep that in mind. These are numbers, but they are fluid. We have employees hire in and leave every week, and so they're, they're very dynamic. Our FTE is below what benchmarks show we should be employing for a city our size. So a good rule of thumb to follow is you should staff one employee for every 100 residents that you have, citizens you have in your municipality. We're just over 76,000, so the FTE of 760, as you mentioned back in 2008 or in previous years, would meet that benchmark. We currently fix it, sit at the 656, so assuming the benchmark is completely accurate, you would be following, falling below that, that benchmark. We are already very lean and mean, contrary to popular belief. Our employees work their tails off. They hit the ground running every day. So I do want to emphasize, we have very solid employees. You don't get into public service for the money. That is absolutely sure. You get into public service because you have a need to give back to your community, and our employees work extremely hard, and I want you to know that. They are already working very, very lean and mean. It does leave a little time for planning, especially at the management level. We, again, hit the ground running every, every morning we come in the door, and we usually don't stop until well after quote-unquote quitting time. It does leave little time to sit back and strategize and plan on how we can continue to streamline and make our services more efficient, and so I would ask you to keep that in mind. City services will suffer. That is, you know, an absolute truth. If we do cut, cut into our positions and our vacancies, there will be things that don't get accomplished. And then the last thing I would ask you to consider is be very careful about pushing our employees too far to burn out. You will start to see workers' comp costs go up. You will start to see our EAP costs go up. We, we owe it to our employees, the ones that come in day in, in day out, and, and really meet the demands that are put on them. We, we owe them that work-life balance. We owe them the opportunity to not work 55 hours in a week. So I would just ask you to continue to consider those items, and we will continue to do what we do and look at each and every vacancy with a critical eye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
And, and by the way, you could interrupt her for questions any time. There's no, no problem with that. We'd welcome any questions you might have. The next issue that we wanted to talk about was cost recovery, and one of the things that had happened was during the... Can you help me find that one?
You got it.
One of the things that we had talked about during the November retreat was cost recovery for the services we provide, and one of the problems is, we have fees that we have not increased in over 20 years, and consequently, the cost of doing business and the increase in goods and services and the amount we have to pay the unions go up, but many of the services that they're providing, the fees don't go up. I've asked the finance director to come and talk a little bit about that, and Patty Lynn has some things to talk about that, and we've talked about that in the staff as well.
So as Steve mentioned, as you guys well know, we've had cost rate studies done in the city and other things. What you're looking at here, the $3 million revenue base of fees, that would exclude parking racks, that would include all your enterprise funds, ambulance billing fees, and I think liquor license fees. So just roughly, we took that base of $3 million and said if you went up 5% and tried to update them, the city could have a recurring revenue of about $150,000. One of the other things that we considered is some of the implementation of new fees so that users will pay for service that we've kind of talked about. Some of the ones we've chosen in the spotlight here are the police department false alarm fees. Currently, you can have a false alarm go off five times before you receive a charge from the city of $50. That means, you know, maybe one or two patrol car shows up at your home or business on a regular basis. It could be looked at as the same residence and you're getting five or six calls a year. That does come at a high cost to the city. In this scenario, which would help recover about $50,000 in recurring revenue a year, would be proposing that once you hit the fifth call, we go back and charge you the full cost recovery of each call. Something to think about, possibly a deterrent for some of the nuisance alarms. And then we have the fire department doesn't charge anything for false alarms. When they get an alarm, they're going out for a structured fire. There's lots of bodies and equipment that are going out there. Some of the scenarios they're considering could result in maybe $25,000 a year in cost recovery. And then, of course, the favorite special events fee. I know we've talked about that a lot over the years. An interesting note there, that Peoria is implementing a $100 fee per block, intersection fee. We don't currently charge police or public works for special events. This is just public works, and it could recover about $65,000 a year recurring. So these are just some of the new fees, and then a kind of a broad stroke on updating some of our very, very outdated fees that could provide some help to fill that budget gap for us on a recurring basis. That's all I have.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Patty Lynn. Thank you very much. And the next one we're going to talk about is business registration. Did you pass those out already? Okay. And we've talked about a business registration program, and I wanted to tell you something about that, though, is as we talk about this, there are many other implications. So as you begin to talk about that, we have two things that I would like to mention. Of course, in many of these, our sister city to the north has some of these that they have and they don't have. One of the things, for example, is they have a business registration, but they don't charge a fee for it. So we would be in communication with our neighbors to the north to make sure we try to do the same kind of a thing, so this doesn't have the effect of trying to run business out of town. I've also communicated this with the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, because many businesses will have some question about this as well. I wanted to emphasize that this is just not an issue of trying to increase the revenue, but it also has public safety and economic development input to it. And I'll mention that by, for example, in economic development input, if someone asks us how many car repair garages we have in town, you say, well, we don't know, because there's not a registration. If you can have that kind of information, it helps very much in terms of people coming to town and doing business. So by registering the business, we have data that can be very useful. In other cases, what happens is we have businesses that we don't know that they're up to code, there are fire problems there, and sometimes we've had to respond to businesses where there was a fire problem. And what we found out was that nothing was done to code because they didn't know that they were setting up a business to serve the public. So one of the things that business registration does is it does have an important public safety aspect to it. Now, how we might want to go about that is up for some investigation, but I've asked our new interim director for community development, Bob Mark, to come and talk about how that might work. And also, I think he'll talk a little bit about video gaming. Bob?
Well, I wasn't available or on staff during your initial discussion on the big picture on the 20th of December, but I think at that time, there was consideration as a revenue source and some other benefits associated with business registration. And I think at that time, the city council and staff was kind of looking at a flat rate fee, and I think there was some discussion among staff members that a flat rate fee may hurt some of our mom-and-pop operations. So we had an opportunity at the staff level to investigate how business registration and business licensing is done in other communities. And what really came out of that, just a cursory search of other common ordinances, was the fee based on the square footage of the business or the premises. So you might have a retail shop of 1,000 square feet, you might have an accessory outbuilding in the back that would also be included in that premises. But essentially, what you're doing is, we do not charge currently for fire inspections that are conducted within the city of Bloomington. And we have two inspectors on staff and one fire suppression, or fire systems inspector, and we're just spread so thin to be able to get out to all these businesses. The biggest thing here is that we're actually knocking on doors to schedule appointments as opposed to actually scheduling them out. So we're not receiving revenues for the services that we provide for these fire inspections. And I think what an opportunity for the city could be to implement some sort of business registration program. So I'd like to go over some things that we kind of looked at. Of the top, highest population communities within the state, excluding Chicago, seven of the 15 have general business registration programs. Six of the seven actually have registration fees. So they might have a registration program that doesn't actually charge a fee much like our, as you said, the community to the north. Although several have very specific categories. You might have amusement licenses, you might have tobacco licenses, and some other ones related to liquor, something like that, as opposed to being a general liquor, or general license category. In general, the general business registration fees range from $100 for the 0 to 1,000 square foot premises to as high as $1,200 based on the square footage of the premises. And some actually did implement a one-time application fee with $125, and other ones didn't have a renewal fee. They would have a one-time fee, and then you move on with your program, but you're at least on the list. And any business that would change either ownership or they vacate a premises and a new business owner comes in, then that would be a new application fee. So there are some hybrids to this program as well. But generally, the benefits of the program are enhanced city business communication. And what I'm talking about there is that we have the opportunity to send out notices, snow removal notices, storm warnings, doing outreach on education for training programs that might be available through our economic development division. It also gives us the opportunity when we have, let's just say there was a break-in at the residence, or at the premises, we would have a quick opportunity to research our database to determine who the property owner is or the manager, and quickly get that property owner notified so that we can get them at the scene, so they can board the property up and secure the building. And we don't actually have that opportunity right now with a lack of business registration. The other one is the revenue needed to support our established programs. We talked about our fire inspection programs and that we are not charging inspection fees for those services throughout the community. Another one is zoning compliance verification for new businesses. You might also have an entrepreneur that might come into the community and say, oh, I want to open a business, and they choose a location that isn't permitted for their zoning, under their zoning district regulations. So essentially, we're going out there to enforce them, to uproot them in the business, to move them to a more appropriate zoning location. And a lot of the applications have an upfront requirement that you had to have verification of your zoning prior to moving into a facility, and then you know that you're not making a mistake or signing a lease and happen to backtrack that information. Certainly, building and life safety is important. We want to have safe environment for all the employees and the customers of the businesses. And then data analysis. This is a way for our economic development division to potentially target our incentives. I mean, do we want to attract a certain type of business or a specific business to the community? And also, it might be a way for us to offer specific training or other incentives for these types of businesses. So we did a very quick analysis of, based now on a scaled approach to the building registration fee based on the square footage, and what we've discovered through assistance from the engineering department was that our average size business is 4,700 square feet. So what that's coming down to, if you look at our graduated scale, we're still at that $100 threshold for fees. And so when we talked before at the big picture meeting, we were at 2,000 approximate businesses times the $100 application fee, and we're at $200,000 of potential revenue. Now, this scale and these grades can go up or down, but it's an opportunity to consider this as an additional revenue source with alternate benefits as well. The other thing that I'd like to discuss this evening is, many of the communities throughout the state have, obviously allow for video gaming, some outright prohibit it. But Bloomington is a community that has allowed for video gaming, and many of the communities are starting to implement video registration fees. And again, talking about our 15 comparable communities within the state and excluding Chicago, 10 of the 15 allowed video gaming, and five of the 10 had terminal registration fees ranging from $250 to $1,000 per terminal. One actually had an additional fee for the, an annual fee for the operating business at $250. So you would have, you're all guaranteed, five terminals plus the $250, and it's a way to add some additional revenue to it. So when we look at the approximately 250 terminals within the city of Bloomington, add to the rate that was applied to Peoria, that would generate approximately $125,000 per And again, there's opportunities for hybrids based on the range of costs throughout the state.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Okay, the next thing I'd like to do is talk about our parking decks. And if you remember, a couple of council meetings ago, we came back to you with a proposal for automating the decks, and that has been approved, and we are putting automation into the parking decks during this next year. Somewhat similar, I would think, to normal, but we're still working on that. But what it really does, it gives us the opportunity to charge for parking or not charge for parking by automating the decks. And we came back there at that time, Russ Waller suggested if we charged for 24-hour parking, we could get as much as $400,000. And I don't think his proposal for 100% parking charging all the time met with as warm a reception as he might have hoped. But so what we did is, we came back here, we said, well, you cut that down in half because you have the opportunity of doing it anyway. And I only suggest that as we do it, if we raise the amount of parking revenue we get, we can lower the amount we need to get from somewhere else, like vacancy savings. But if we lower the amount that we get from parking, then we have to raise the amount we get from somewhere else. And so it just depends upon what we have an appetite for. But I've asked Russ to take a look at that and come back and talk to you a little bit about what it might work out.
Assistant City Manager Rasmussen, or interim City Manager Rasmussen, sorry. So as City Manager indicated, back in November, I did, during our presentation about upgrading the access to the parking garages, I did propose, or provide some information about what turning the decks into 24/7 operation would potentially provide an increased revenue. I'm not advocating for that strongly, I'm just providing information. Obviously, it's your decision to make, not mine. So as indicated, that potential revenue, and these are approximations, obviously, was about $400,000 if you did turn it into 24/7 operation. So after some of the feedback I received and discussions with interim City Manager Rasmussen, I went back and looked at some other alternatives, and one of the primary ones is maybe a staged approach, just to see what a potential revenue we could get if we first start with looking at some of the special events. Obviously, those probably would, primarily would be focused on the arena. So if we would look at potentially 10 events at the arena where we could charge a $5 entry fee to the gate or into the parking decks, I'm just looking at Lincoln and Market. And we could try to use some moderate numbers on the number of people we would see actually park at the facilities, and then also the $5 rate, which I think is a little less than some of the private vendors are charging for their facilities. That would give us about $200,000, so about half of the $400,000. I would like to point out that we did not include Pepsi Ice Center Garage in that because there's already a fee attached to ticket sales that cover use of that garage and the Butler Lot as well. So there's a couple of options you could consider for looking at some potential increased revenue from the parking operations. Thank you.
Now, another one of the things that we had talked about is priority-based budgeting. And on priority-based budgeting, if you remember, we had a number of things that rated very high on the list. The opposite side of that coin is the things that maybe didn't rate as high on the list and might be available for some reductions. And so what I've done is I've gone back and asked staff to look at some of those things and look at what might be the things that are lower on the list. Now, we don't know because we need to get impact back from you, but we've got a couple of them, and what we'll call those is service level reductions. Most of them come into the category of public works, and so I'm going to ask Jim to come up and talk about that, and please refrain from throwing things at him until he gets done.
I do appreciate that. This is very brief. The two items just to highlight for you is it really focused on the street lighting request, street light placement. That's $80,000 out of $100,000 we typically allot on an annual basis. We received, just to describe for you what this would be, is in the city, we received different requests for dark blocks or issues to where we would then evaluate as a staff to go and provide assessment. Does this meet our current standard for lighting? And are there opportunities for us to add some lighting here? That does cost the city in funds. And on an annual basis, a lot of times, we'll run out of funds for that, for that ability to do that. That is one example of a place where we could cut back on, for reductions. Another one is curb replacement. There are times whenever we, as part of the work that we do, this isn't part of the street resurfacing, but other facets in commercial areas, residential areas, will need to go in and provide some additional curb replacement. We'll still do quite a bit, but we'll have to pare back on some of that. Again, just a funding level reduction that we would be looking at. That's it at this time.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I'm not quite ready to get to this one yet, but leave that slide up. The two things that you would have seen on exhibit two was we had divestiture of facilities and revenue collection. Each one of those was for $25,000, and that's not on this slide. I just want to say that I'm going to skip over those. I'm not doing a presentation on those because we talk about divestiture of facilities. We have some land that we could maybe get rid of, but in many cases, it's like a sliver of land, or it's like a triangle of land that we've gained because we had a road that go through and we didn't need that little piece of land. Well, we could sell that to the adjoining landowner if they would buy it, but they won't buy it because they don't have any need for it. So we look through, there just isn't very many pieces of land that we can get some money off of. We could get some off. I put $25,000 on there because we'll put those pieces of property out for sale, and maybe, of course, we'll sell them and we might get something off it, but it doesn't give us a long-term help to the budget. There's some other pieces of property that we've talked about. The famous one is Fire Station Number Five on the southwest corner of town. I've had people say, well, if you could, why don't you sell that? And I said, that's a great idea. Would you like to buy it? And they say, no. Fire stations are tough to sell these days, so it's tough to help our budget between now and the 30th of April by selling a fire station. So it doesn't help us right now. It hasn't, doesn't mean we haven't forgotten about it, but there's just, there's no easy way to do that. The other one is revenue collection. We have about $250,000 worth of uncollected parking tickets. We've hired a collection agency, and we've gotten about $25,000 of that back, and we'll continue to do that. It's not going to solve our budget problem, but I just wanted to let you know that we are continuing to do that, and we haven't given up on those. A bigger issue then, to get through this, though, is how we get to the $2.9 million because all the things we've talked about so far don't get us there yet. So we've gone back to all the departments and talked about cutting some pieces out of their operating budgets to get to this. Now, Scott Rathman, our budget officer, has been doing that in the last couple of weeks, and I'm going to ask him to come up and tell how he got to $525,000.
Well, I'm not going to read through the list. I wanted to discuss some of the processes that we went through, you know, because how do you start? How do you go to all these department heads and say, you know, come up with 2.9 million? Well, the first thing we did was, we knew we needed to provide them some historicals.
we knew we needed to provide them some historicals. So from the get-go, we sent them all worksheets for their departments that showed four years of actual results for their departments, and it had a calculation of their four-year average. What had been discovered previously by Patty Lynn and the previous City Manager was, a lot of times, the departments were coming in under their budgets. So how best to show this, but give them the actuals, you know, every year, they're focusing on the budget, the budget, the budget, the budget, and cutting the budget. Well, let's show what they've done over the last four years, what's the average. They can see the blips, they can work through those blips, understand the blips, you know, give us the questions, what happened here, and try to, try to see where there's a line running through there, or maybe an issue that they're not going to be encountering this year that they encountered in years past. So we actually gave them a directive that we wanted them to hit their four-year average, and if they weren't going to hit that, they had to give us an explanation. Now, in many cases, they weren't able to hit that, but it was a good process for them to go through in understanding what was driving their numbers, and it was a good process for me, as a new Budget Manager, to see what was behind those numbers. The second iteration that we went through was comparing their 2018 budget to their 2019 budget. Steve was using the term of a status quo budget, you know, of flat revenues. So if we have flat revenues, obviously, that means we need to have flat expenditures year over year. So we provided them the same detailed worksheets, 2018 versus 2019, and then we met with them one-on-one and went through line by line, looking at each difference and talking about any up or any down. So sometimes you could do something about the up, sometimes you couldn't. And then there were, there were times where, you know, we just had to look and ask a harder question, "Do you really need to do that next year?" Okay? So the reductions are a combination of hard questions, hard answers, and delays. So I wanted to make sure and point that out, that some of these items, you know, like the clerk's office, codification, I mean, we need to do that eventually, but, you know, that's a delay, but that's a savings that we needed to get in this budget. We're looking at 2.9 million. So what can we do until we figure out all the other things that we've been discussing this evening in making the longer-term changes, the linking the revenue to programs that was mentioned earlier, that kind of thing. So I hate to use this term, but to buy some time. So there's a combination of a straight-up review of, maybe we don't need to use a consultant, maybe we can use an internal expertise for that project, maybe we can delay, and that's how we came up with the half a million. When I, I also want to make one other comment, too, is that we do do monthly budget-to-actual reviews with all the department heads, where we go line by line and we read their budgets to actual, giving where they should be during the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I wanted to give another example of that, too. One of the things we found in all of these Town Hall meetings we had and meetings with different constituent groups is, there is a refrain of just spend less money. And that's kind of what this does. One of the things we had recently was, there was a purchase request that came across my desk for a new video conferencing system for the Public Works Conference Room for $49,000, and that would be a good thing. Currently, what we do is we talk on the telephone, so we have a teleconferencing, and then we can show slides that each of the different people at different locations can show. If you do the video conferencing, you can see each other face-to-face, and that's a nice thing to do for $50,000. So what I thought is, let's just not buy that this year, and let's roll it back into these kind of things and see where we are the next time around. And there are savings to be had by just not spending things until we get a handle on the budget we've got. So I wanted to let you know that the staff is doing that thing, those kind of things, on a regular basis. Now, I wanted to move on to another piece of this because what I wanted to show you here, this is the $2.9 million, and within these, these areas that we've talked about, there's $2.9 million to be saved. And I know as we went around, some of you didn't like some things and did like other things, and we want to have the opportunity for you to move those things around, and I'd ask you to come back to us anytime, call any of the department heads, or me, or Melissa, who is working on this, and let us know your impact on that. Of course, what we want to do is, is get a consensus, and so at the next council meeting, if there's some that you'd like to give us a hand raise or a head nod, that would help us because then we can go back and we can put these into the budget based on what you've said and what you voted on, and we don't have to kind of try to read your mind sometimes. So as much as you could give that, that to us would be helpful. If you notice in the schedule that I said, we haven't had any Saturday work sessions in there because the council meetings that we have can work with the input that you give back to us. But of course, if you find that it would be useful for us to have a Saturday or two to really work on these things where maybe you're not constrained by time here, the staff certainly stands ready to do that, and we serve at your pleasure. Just let us know if it looks like we can't get there by that. Now, these were the two slides that were on the left-hand side in the big picture down at the BCPA. I'm going to go now back to the, to the right-hand side. And the right-hand side is a little tougher because this is the other half of this, which council has been asking us to do now for a couple of years, and that is the Capital Improvement Plan, the five-year Capital Improvement Plan. And so what you've got on the left-hand side of this chart, which was Exhibit 3, and you, this came out in your packet as well, is a number of projects that we have that could be done in the capital needs category. When we went back and talked to all of these people that I've been talking about, got public input, talked to members of the council, two of these things came out as, as high, of high importance. And over on the left-hand side, you see the Aquatic Center at O'Neill Pool came up over and over again as a must-do project. That's a project that is a swimming pool that was made to last 20 years, it's last 44 years now. I do not believe we can get it back opened up this, this summer, but Parks Department will do its very best. But the need is great for that, and there was great sympathy amongst the community for doing that. The thing is, though, it's $10 million or thereabouts. Now, we could do it by less, by making it less of a swimming pool, and maybe just make a swimming pool, or we can make it a bigger aquatic center. That is yet to be determined, but, but we've put $10 million out there as, as an approximation. To do that by borrowing the money is $600,000. And so the question is then, where would you get $600,000 to do that project from? And one of the ways we can do that is by, is by putting a small increase in property tax. And I hate to put that word out there, but the money has to come from somewhere. Do you have that example there you can pass up? Yeah, let's, let's do the Aquatic Center first. That would be 4B. And I wanted to give you an example of what that would, would look like. As you know, we have an increased property tax for many years, and maybe that O'Neill Pool over on the west side of town is a time, place where we might consider that. So what I've got in this piece of paper that's being passed around now is an example of what that might look, look like. Oops, excuse me. There we go. And so what happens to get the annual amount of $600,000 to make the debt service on that would cost the average homeowner, owner $17.83 a year, or a .0324 increase in property tax. I wanted to show you that because it is a way to get that swimming pool built. There are other ways, but I'm giving you these as options so you see what it takes. As I say, I'm not, the staff is not recommending these, nor they're not dismissing them. What we're trying to do is just give you some examples of how those things might be done. I'm going to go back again here now and talk about the other one. And if you look at the Capital Needs Exhibit 3 down below the Aquatic Center, I've also highlighted additional street resurfacing and brick streets. The total cost of that, if we wanted to do it on an annual basis, would be another $700,000 a year if you, if you bonded for that. But one of the things that we do by bonding for it is, that means you get a one-time increase. So you can get that money out there one time, like $11,500, but, but that doesn't help you on the long term because you can't mobilize enough resources to do that on a regular base, on, on an annual basis. What you need to do is, you need to do that with a steady increase year after year to increase the ability for us to maintain the streets. So what happens is, the way the numbers on that work out, interestingly enough, was we had our motor fuel tax, which was about $2.3 million a number of years ago, and what that meant, if you look at a curve, our streets were continually getting in worse shape. Then we got the, the increase in the sales tax here a couple of years ago, and that gave us another $2.3 million, and that brought the curve not quite up to level. We're getting behind, but at a slower rate. In order to get the roads and streets repaired to where we can begin to make progress, we need to move it up a little bit. And moving it up a little bit above level requires a constant improvement over a long period of time. One bond for, like we put here of $11 million is a way to do it, but it doesn't give it to you on the long term. So, have you passed this one out? So what, what, a way to do this is to increase the local motor fuel tax by 4 cents. What that does is, that gives you another $2.3 million. So that makes us go from 2.3 to 4.6, and up another 2.3 to just get us above, above break-even point. And what the city engineer and the assistant city engineer will be able to do then is to go out and to continue to, to maintain streets for the long term. I think Patty Lynn used the word "sanctro-sanct" when we were talking about the, the $15 million fund balance reserve, and I would use it the same way here. You get that 4 cents extra fuel tax, motor fuel tax, and it is sanctro-sanct. It then is what maintains the roads. I think the most common refrain that we heard in all of our citizen groups of what thing we needed to do most was fix our streets. We can't get $2.3 million out of the, the cuts that we did before. We cut $2.9 million out of the budget by doing all the things you said, and we showed you here earlier. We can't get another $2.3 million out of that to fix those roads. So somewhere, we're going to have to find a way to do that. I've showed you here an example of what that amounts to, a 20-gallon tank for four fill-ups, that's 80 cents per tank, which is $3.20 per month, or $38 a year. And for that $38 a year, the people who use the streets, that is, the people who use vehicles on it, can get that curve from just below level to just above level, and that's what that proposes. Now, again, I'm neither advocating that, nor am I dismissing it. I'm just saying, if fixing streets is one of our first priority, this is a way to do it. And of course, it will be up to the council to decide what it is you, you would like to do on that, or what you, you would not like to do because everything, everything has to, to be paid for. I've asked Jay, Jay Tetzloff, to go down to Miller Park and plant a bunch of money trees, and he's doing that, but it, they don't, they don't begin to bear fruit for many years. So until he pulls that one off, we're going to have to do something else. At one of the work sessions we had, Town Hall meeting, one of the city councilmen says we have some hard decisions that we'll have to make, and that is true. We have a number of them, and what we presented for you here today is the various pieces in these decisions, and you can move them around any way you want, but I would say it's, it's your budget, it's not the staff's budget, and we will do it however you would like to do it. And you can look at these, and you can look at all the other things that are in the budget, but these are the major things that will both help us balance the budget with a $2.9 million deficit, and also look at what we can do for some of those major capital improvements. I thank you very much for your time on that presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have now, me or the staff.
Now we begin the questions and comments. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes, thanks very much, Steve. One of the things you and I talked about as an additional targeted action item was a full list of all the different donations we're giving to outside agencies, everything from, you know, I don't want to pick on anybody, but I don't, like the Museum of History, all the way up to Economic Development, Connect Transit, just seeing the full array and making sure that there's still priority items for us. I think that would be an additional helpful review for us.
Yes, I do owe you that, and I will get that back really soon so that you can use that in these deliberations as you begin to think about these over the next couple of weeks.
Alderman Hellman.
I just wanted to ask, are we going to go through these one by one, or alderman by alderman, or?
Essentially, at this point, what we have is a presentation, and so this is time for a council discussion. If you want to go through some of them one by one, you're certainly welcome. So there is no specific format. We've been given a balanced budget. We've been given some priorities. This is the beginning of the conversation. It's not speak now or forever holds your peace. It's just the beginning of the conversation. So if there's some specific questions that you have or specific comments that you have, it's however you would like to handle them. We don't have any, at this point, the 45 minutes budgeted for council discussion is open.
Okay.
So the ball is in the council's court.
Please, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to suggest that we take them one at a time the way they were presented, just so we stay on rather than jumping from topic to topic. I don't know if that makes any sense to anybody or not.
I want to be sure I'm understanding. So you're suggesting grouping our questions by individual presenters or by those particular departments?
Yeah, by the exhibits. Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, and you know, that, that we-
And we can do it that way. The difficulty is that, in some cases, they may transcend departments. We might, well, no, we're going to be here for 45 minutes.
Well, you don't have to stay for that long.
And I'll keep asking for extensions of time, but this is a first wave, and, and a lot of this information is going to take us time to think about and to process internally.
Sure, and we-
And so, yeah.
Yeah, we don't expect you to come up with an answer on each one of these today. We've got, we got two months, really, to do it, and we've got a month to do it, and you can come back to us. But if you have a couple of them that you would like to address today or had some, some comments, we would certainly, certainly welcome that. I'm always looking for, for a show of hands.
You still had your, your light on. You had the floor.
Okay, then I'll, I'll start. The first topic that was presented was solid waste and Mr. Karch, and I'm just going to say that we provide a Lexus-type service to our residents. And we don't like change. Those are two things that I think are, most of us can, can agree on. I'm going to, I'm just going to put it out there that I don't, I don't see solid waste as a core service. We're one of only three communities downstate, the other one being Normal, that are in the city, they're a municipal trash business. So I would personally like to see us either get out of trash or increase the cost to pay for itself. And I think two years ago, when we were talking about this the last time, it was $27 a month to, to cover the cost of trash. It may have gone up a little bit since then, but if, if we were to reduce service, it should be in line with Normal, so we don't see our people dumping things north of Division Street or vice versa. But I think we have two, I personally think we have two options, get out of trash or make it pay for itself.
Alderman Sage was next, and then Alderman Black.
And Diana, I mean, I think, I'm willing to be part of a conversation about whether or not we need to be in the solid waste business, so just to echo what you said there. I have a question about just the last page on the service level change or fee increase, Jim or Steve. We have some, we have some projections here of personnel savings, vehicle savings, split-shift collection savings. And Jim, help me understand, elsewhere in your presentation, you talk about making some service level changes. And so are those service level changes- And so are those service level changes reflected? Are they embedded in these three costs that are reflected here?
They are. What you're seeing before you is going through the budget and trying to find what the impact would be if we changed the service level. Here's one of the issues that is important to note. It's hard to capture that, all the savings that we need in one year. Whenever we do no layoffs, a lot of the savings over time will be through attrition. And so that first year, we're trying to find the ways that, you know, we can find that $1.1 million gap the first year. That's one of the challenges. When you shift people over, nobody can say, "We don't need work on the streets," but our employees, that still is one of our higher costs. The ways that we're looking to do that is if we don't go out to the side as much, we are trying to capture that through, you know, less maintenance, less equipment that's going out from a solid waste perspective to service that. We're looking at less fuel to whenever we're driving our streets less in that way. Does that make more sense? Another way to talk about that from a personnel savings standpoint, when we have more full-time employees, part of that assumption was from a seasonal perspective, we would need less seasonals. We would try to eliminate every seasonal we could because we're going to try to leverage our full-time staff, some things like that. I'm sorry, did you know?
Yeah, that was, that was a little bit more information than I was looking for. I just wanted to make sure that the service level adjustments that you had at least offered as possible and elsewhere in the presentation were, in fact, embedded in those costs. So things around brush and bulk waste and stuff are reflected in those savings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That was the only question I had about solid waste, so thank you. There may be others, but trying to follow the Diana rule here, and we can, you know, maybe group these together a little bit.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank Steve and wherever he went, Steve and staff, for all the hard work they've done on this. This is the most in-depth, high-level budget that I've seen in my time on council that's been incredibly helpful in not only informing the council about where we're at with some of these programs, but also helping educate the public on these issues as well. And I think it's pretty clear that there are no easy answers to these questions. And from what I gathered from your initial remarks, you're kind of looking for direction from us about where we are at on some of these items. And again, I know that you're not recommending these wholeheartedly, you're just providing us with some options. So to that effect, I'm probably going to forget some here because this is a lot of paper, and I'm more of a tablet guy. So a couple of things. When it comes to solid waste, I would recommend, suggest that we see some sort of a resolution come before the council here to direct staff to explore privatization options. I would be voting against that resolution. But having seen this conversation happen in my time on council, I don't want either our employees to be constantly concerned about what we're going to do. And I also don't want to waste a bunch of staff time if we're truly not interested in exploring that option. I don't know where the majority is on that, but that's, because that's one of our biggest ticket items, I think that's something that I would recommend seeing come forward. And then we can have that discussion kind of separate from this, and we can see what our options are there. You know, we can nitpick on solid waste all day. Ultimately, to get my support for any types of changes, it would need to come along with some code enforcement for dumping and landlord cleanout. Maybe we even talk about even removing landlords entirely from our program, making them get a dumpster. These are things that should be explored, at least from my perspective. Just kind of jumping around here, business registration.
Could I go back for just a moment on that? You suggested that there be a resolution to come forward to talk about outsourcing. And that way, there is a way of laying it to rest. If the council votes that they don't want to do that, then we know that we can come back with some other options. Is there enthusiasm on the part of the council for us to do that? If so, we could come back at the next council meeting on the 12th with a resolution to explore privatization. That would be easy to do. And if it doesn't get the votes, then we know we won't go that direction. If it does, we can at least explore it. It doesn't commit you to do that, but at least we need to explore it. And I'll tell you frankly, I, over in Government Center, a month doesn't go by that I don't have a company coming and asking if they would, could take over our solid waste, privatization. They're out there, and they're hungry for the business, and we could get some proposals back to you pretty easily.
Color me enthused.
Pardon me?
Color me enthused for that. I don't know where everybody else stands on that.
Well, uh-
Are you asking?
Maybe what happens is the mayor would ask for a motion to that effect, if that's what you want.
I don't know that we have, an emotion wouldn't be appropriate, correct, Mr. Jergens? Because we are not prepared to act, but we could ask for an opinion.
Yeah, I just, I will bring that back if you want me to. But if I'm looking out here, and I got five or six of you don't want to do that, I don't think we'll bring it back.
So, Steve, would you be able to do the kind of due diligence that would be needed in order to bring some additional information back to us as part of having that conversation? Or are you just suggesting that we just, you know, kind of at some pie in the sky level say, "Yes, we're in favor of privatization"? I mean, that doesn't seem to me to be a very completed staff approach to having that conversation.
The answer to your question actually is yes on both accounts. First of all, what I would like to do is to know if you would like us to explore that. If you would like us to explore it, we'll bring that back. But I would like something from the council to say, "Go out and do it," a resolution to explore that. The second answer to your question is, can we do the due diligence? Absolutely. What happens, these companies have been doing it all the time. I probably got three proposals sitting over in my office in Government Center right now to do it. That's not a hard thing to do. Now, it doesn't mean that we could do that by next time, but if what you do is you would want us to explore it and bring it back, I believe that we could have that back by the time you're ready to vote on a budget.
And I would just say, I mean, I think there's value in that approach, right, Steve? Because I was going to save my general comments till the end, but since Scott decided to offer general comments at the beginning, you know, I'll go ahead and say that as well. One thing I appreciate about what you've done here is, right, is you're saying staff is neither recommending these or dismissing these, right? You are saying these are political decisions that the council will own, right? And that, quite honestly, will be where the heavy lifting gets done. In addition to the heavy lifting that staff has done, will be the political aspects of some of the budget decisions that we have to make. And so, again, I'm in favor of that approach, right? The council should own what the council should own, right? Staff owns what the staff owns. So let me say, first of all, I appreciate the approach that you've taken, is to say, here are a number of different options that you can look at. And these will all have both financial impacts as well as political impacts. We're trying to lay out the financial impacts. Council, you're going to have to figure out what the political impacts are and your appetite to absorb or embrace the financial impacts of your budget options. So thank you for that.
Sure, thank you. And that's exactly right. And I'm trying to answer Council Black's question is, should we bring back to you a resolution to explore outsourcing? If you'd like to, we will. We can bring it back next time.
Actually, I will, I'm going to defer to Alderwoman Burgess, and then I'm going to come around and ask you very quickly, very quick knee-jerk reaction as to whether or not we should ask staff to bring back a proposal of privatization, and where are we on that, very quickly.
And that does not mean we're saying that we're asking you to privatize or not. We just want to know if we should go ahead and explore that.
Should you spend staff time, or are we not interested? And, yeah.
And I had a question about that, because there's something that I vaguely remember, and I want to make sure I'm remembering correctly. So when we talk about solid waste, we have three potential areas of operation. We have our weekly garbage pickup, we have bulk waste, and we have brush. And I'm pretty sure I've been told in the past that when companies come to us and want to examine privatization and taking over our solid waste, they're only interested in one of those, and that's the weekly pickup. And they're not so interested in bulk and brush because it's not as profitable. Is that correct?
Not exactly, because what happens is they would want to pick up trash, and they'll do that any day of the week because they make money on it. But when we add up bulk and brush, what would have to be done is that would be part of a contract, and they would have to make a proposal in that way so that they could also make money doing that. They're not going to do it and lose $2.1 million a year.
Okay, so I am remembering this incorrectly, that the private companies could be interested in the bulk and the brush.
Not having talked, you know, directly with them about what service they can provide, what I will say is that I don't know of many communities that are privatized that have the service level we have. That's probably the best way I can say that. We have Lexus-level service, how it was described, and that's accurate. But again, you know, not having broached that topic, that is one of the issues that could be looked at.
And I have one more question. So when it comes to, so all of our solid waste is supposed to be an enterprise fund? Yes, it's supposed to-
Pardon me?
It's supposed to be an enterprise fund?
Yes, as of 2011.
Okay. And so we have our week-to-week pickup, we have our bulk waste, and we have our brush. Am I, I put that in the week-to-week, sorry. So am I correct that the reason it's not an enterprise fund is simply because of the bulk and the brush? That that's where that deficit's coming in?
Well, I think whether you call it an enterprise fund or not, it would be an enterprise fund if it made money. Right now, what it does is we have to subsidize it, so it's kind of a matter of semantics, I think.
It's also, I will say, hard to separate a lot of the services that we, you know, that we provide. The same employees do different types of work. And so that's where you have to figure out what that service level is and how you do it. So again, there's that diversity in how we do our jobs.
But at the end of the day, I think we've been told several times that bulk waste is something that really costs us a lot of money.
In the past, whenever we did our, if you go on online, you can look at our solid waste analysis, and that's for the entire, you know, general public can look at. As I recall, the estimate was like 65% of our overall budget. That was in 2014. That was prior to the changes we made from weekly to biweekly. That would change those numbers. As you recall, out of that 2014 study, then, the council voted to make changes in our bulk waste. We haven't gone through and reassessed it. But again, previously, it was about 65%, as I recall.
Here's about the way that would look, I think. If you took only the collection of trash, you could make money off of that, which would largely offset bulk pickup if you went to the kind of proposal that Jim just identified. The thing that is always hanging out there is the brush pickup, which is always just going to be a loser. And we would have to figure out a way to have a outside agency pick that up. And if we, then they'll do it. Some cities do it. They pick it up, but you have to cut it up in certain sizes and bundle it and those sort of things. So it's a balance between how much you want to pay and how much you want to have the service done. But there are companies that we could get to do that.
Alderman Sage.
Thank you. So I'll just follow up on what I thought I heard Scott suggest that is. To me, there's value in having that conversation because this is the conversation that we seem to perpetually have, you know? So why don't we, why don't we answer the question? You know, I mean, because we heard about it, we hear about it at the town halls, you know, I hear about it from, you know, the neighbors in my ward. I'm sure the other aldermen do. Let's quit speculating. Let's not be focused on what we think. Let's focus on what we can know. And to me, there's value in having that discovery process because then we'll answer the questions, and we can move on.
Exactly.
And I think at 500 feet is, are we going to save our citizens any money at all? Or would it cost even more money for privatization?
And what level of service would they get?
And what level of service would they get? Alderman Black?
Yeah. Thank you. And to that, all those questions, I think, would have to be answered if we're even interested in having that conversation as a majority, because all of that gets funneled through that lens. So I think we're starting to hear some consensus around that. One of the things I like about what we're doing here is if you don't like X, you need to produce something else to fill in the gap. And I just wanted to say that I'm not really a big fan of the business registration fee. I get the idea of it, and I understand why it's important. I think maybe over some time, we could talk about that. But I'd like to see some cost recovery, maybe in the terms of if you receive a water bill via mail, you can opt for a paperless option. If you don't, you know, five bucks a month for that. You know, if you pay online with the automatic pay with a credit card for your water bill, that may be to save you some money. And then we stop paying those 2%, 3% fees, or we add on that amount in some way to offset those costs. I'd like to see that instead of charging businesses for a registration fee. But thank you again for all of this. I know this is a lot of work and summation of a lot of time, and looking forward to a more informed discussion this year.
Alderman Bray.
Thank you. So this is just kind of in the weeds a little bit, Jim, but you, in your proposal, you make mention of a potential shift split and talking about creating a morning shift and an evening shift and kind of changing some things around town about when trucks are rolling through. I know those solid waste trucks start off early in the mornings, but what did you have in mind with that?
We really struggled with this one, to be honest, whenever we looked at this idea originally, because part of it is, you know, we're wondering how viable this is as an option. A couple of the concerns that we had was the transfer station. You know, it's only open for so many hours, and how do you, if you started off early in the morning, let's say you started off, a lot of commercial entities do collections at 3:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. That's not unusual. But the transfer station for us to be able to be open, to be able to be viable is, can be a challenge. And then we also thought, you're off shift for our employees during snow removal and others. If somebody were to call in, there's a lot of overtime associated with that. There still can be, and that's one of the difficulties that we're, you know, we still would have to work through. But what we would, what we're talking about, at least from some discussions, like I said, with Allied Waste Republic from our transfer station, if they're willing to stay open later, then it still becomes a possible savings. What we would look at is saying, we regularly have our 6:00 to 2:00 or 7:00 to 3:00, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. or 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then you'd have a second shift from, you know, 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 or 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. That second shift is where you would utilize, you know, that same piece of equipment. The concern being is that you're using that same piece of equipment twice as much. Well, it's going to break down just about as much. The hope is that sometimes with the chassis, it'll last a little bit longer, you do more replacement on your automated arms. But we have older equipment now. A lot of our equipment, we started purchasing in 2012, 2014. So we've got 12 pieces of automated equipment. If we were able to lower that to eight, you know, and do it instead of, you know, six, you had more spares than maybe we have currently, we could accommodate some of that, you know, some of those breakdowns that are going to happen. But again, you know, we, this is an out-of-the-box idea, that we don't know a lot of places that have done this. So we're just, we're taking different ideas and trying to find the best thing we can for efficiencies.
So in that regard, did you crunch any numbers regarding collecting trash every eight days or every nine days instead of every seven days?
No, that wasn't actually something that we crunched. One of the aspects of a split shift would be reassessment of our current routes. You know, we might need to do that if we looked at split shift to try to find the best way to do that. Again, should the council be able to overcome those hurdles of nighttime collection or, you know, some of the noise issues? Then we would probably spend a little bit more time on those issues of what kind of effort do we have to undergo. But honestly, we really don't want to go down that path until we know there's some interest from the council on that service change.
Alderwoman Painter, and then, oh, I'm sorry, were you completed?
Thank you.
You finished?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alderwoman Painter and Milowambe, and then Alderwoman Hellman.
Am I remembering correctly that the new automated trucks cost $5 million?
Well, each of them costs around $325,000. The dual arms are about $360, $360,000. And again, if you look at, you know, 12 of those, then you are getting into that range, still under, still under that. But it still is a significant investment for our community.
And they have a life expectancy of four to five years?
Yeah, we've been getting about seven years, you know, seven years out of them. But they are, they do maintain, they take a lot more maintenance. Whenever you have those automated arms, the more movement it has, the more those break down. And that and the compacters.
Factor that into the budget every year?
The maintenance costs of those are factored in the solid waste budget.
And the rebuying them and-
Yes, those are in the lease payments underneath the budget.
The other question I have is headcount. When I pulled up the old numbers, in 2011, there were 37.33 full-time employees. And, well, actually, no, 39.33. And then it went to 40. And then you got the new trucks, and headcount was supposed to be reduced in, by how many? By what percentage?
A lot of those we reduced through seasonal staff. What we used to do is have a lot of 10 months of seasonal staff on the back of those rear packers. The other facet out of that is, in the solid waste division, they also perform the services of street sweeping, and so there are bodies associated with that as well, alley maintenance and other items we do.
But, you know, when I look at these numbers, headcount never seemed to get reduced. And then the last time that we had a reduction, it was supposed to go down to 34 full-time full-time employees. But yet, when they sent me this letter, there were forty-six signatures on it. How does that happen?
Well, my guess is that, I, I didn't see that, the signatures on there, but my guess is you might have had signatures from other members of, of that AFME Local 699 that might be in streets and sewers that feel also impacted, because it's a joint group and unit. But currently, there's thirty-five employees in, in solid waste, and that was a reduction from that 2015, as I recall, June first of 2015. We did reduce six employees. We went from, and that was through attrition over the course of a year, from a weekly collection to biweekly collection of bulk and brush.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Milowambe.
Okay, thank you. I, I do have a, a lot of questions, but I, I think some of them are a little too detailed, you know, so I don't want to spend too much time asking those.
Give those to us at any time, we'll answer them.
Right, exactly. I think that, I think it'd be more productive for, for us to do that. One of the questions that I, I had, I was curious whether or not, you know, in looking at the budget from last year, I saw that, you know, we're expecting some fluctuations in terms of annual bond payments, right? So I, you know, what I saw was that our bond payments are supposed to decrease by something like four hundred thousand dollars for FY19. So I, I just wanted to be sure I, you know, I'm, I'm correct in that, and whether or not that's factored into all of our calculations and discussions here.
Addie, would you like to talk about that? I know, we've talked about this before.
The short answer is yes, it's factored in. It's factored into the deficit. It's already been absorbed, any savings in that service into the deficit.
If I, if I can go back, I still have one question to ask, this good conversation that Mr. Black and Mr. Sage were having about, about solid waste and outsourcing, and there's various opinions, but, but one of the things that, that we've asked is to bring back a, a resolution. I would like to bring back a resolution to council the next time, to have you ask, tell us to consider going out and looking at various outsourcing options. And the reason I'd like to do that is because then you can vote that up or down, and if you vote it down, we'll forget about it, and we'll go to some of these other options. But if you say you would like us to look at it, then we'll begin to look at it. And it isn't going to happen overnight, if even if you want to outsource it, I can't put my magic wand down and make it happen tomorrow. We'd have to go back, and we would have to do, send out RFQs, we'd have to interview bidders. It would be a year's process, so it doesn't happen automatically. But we would begin the discussion by that ordinance, and so unless you tell me otherwise, I'd like to bring a resolution of that effect back to you next time.
Right. Well, essentially, I think what we were going to do is, and if you could, I'm going to start with Alderman Bray, if we could just very, very quickly, do, are you in favor of us moving forward with a proposal of some form to explore the cost of privatizing our trash collection?
I'd like to see those numbers, yes, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Bray, excuse me, Alderman Black. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes. Yes. Okay, you, you, the two of you just asked different questions, right? Or am I, am I getting tired?
No, I'm happy.
Mine, mine was probably, mine was probably.
Because you're, you're basically asking what he wanted the resolution to say for next week. I think I would rather.
No, 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 I was just, are you, do you generally think we should have that information?
To, to move forward on fact finding all the information?
On what it would cost us?
Whereas, I think Steve said, a resolution that would allow us to engage in the fact finding process. Personally, I would rather have a resolution at our next meeting, so, so we can get a little bit of public weigh-in before we move forward on what sounds like a pretty fact-intensive process.
Right.
And that's what Steve, what question is everyone else asking, answering?
I answered Steve.
Steve, okay, then yes.
Are we okay?
What I'm suggesting.
Okay. Alderman Milowambe.
Yes.
So, so I want to ask Steve, what, I want to be sure that, that you're clear on what you think a majority of yeses are asking you to do, because I'm, I'm, I think I'm going to say yes, but I want to be sure that, that you and staff are clear on what it is you think the council is asking you to bring back at the next, to the next meeting.
Sure. And that would be a resolution directing staff to go out and consider investigating outsourcing solid waste?
Yes. Alderman Mathie.
Real information is good information, so yes.
Okay, and I haven't written that ordinance yet, so I'm writing as fast as I can, but we'll get as close as we can to that. And of course, if you don't like it, you either change it on the floor or vote it down, but at least then we'll, we'll have something that will help us move forward a little bit in the solid waste business. Thank you very much.
And then, as you're doing that, I would hope that we would also talk about, at least a little bit about some of the qualitative information in, in control.
Absolutely.
Right? Because one of the things, if you talk to mayors who've outsourced or others who've done this, even going back thirty years, is that today, if we miss a cul-de-sac, we can call Jim Karch, you lose control. And we can get somebody out there, most of the time the same day, to take care of that. If we privatize, about all we can do is call some company from Peoria or, or Chicago and say, we'll remember this in two years when your contract is up. So you definitely lose control. So, so at least articulating those qualitative factors.
Sure.
As part of costs would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments, Alderman Bray.
And, thank you. So Steve, in regards to the capital needs exhibit three, we have a couple items that were, that were mentioned. You talked about Aquatic Center O'Neil, and then we talked a little bit about additional street resurfacing and brick streets. That number together for additional street resurfacing and brick streets comes to eleven million, five hundred thousand dollars. Can we have that broken out, please, for additional street resurfacing, and then break out what the additional cost would be if those couple blocks were brick streets, so that we can individually look at those numbers and make some decisions about that?
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. And what that is looking at is an eleven point five million dollar bond, if you want to do it at one time, and then you have the eleven point five million dollars, and you'd have to do it then probably over several years, but we can break that down for you.
Thank you.
Jim, if you'll make sure you make a note of that, so we've got it.
Okay. Other questions? Alderman.
Just one other thing, and, and this is, I, I thought about this as Nicole was speaking, because Nicole, I think you, you raised some good points, some, some of the good talking points around some of the, the openings and such. And one of the concerns that I have, and, and, and maybe we're going to do this, but it seems to me like that we're still leaving one part of the conversation out here when we say we're not going to fill these positions without then also saying, these are then some corresponding services that, some specific services. I know you, you made a general statement that city services will suffer. I guess I want to make sure that I have some line of sight in terms of, of when we have, when we have openings that we don't fill, then, then what services, what service levels are either, are we either down, you know, downgrading, you know, or, or we're going to find another way, an alternate way to deliver those services, like we just talked about with, with solid waste? Because otherwise, if we don't do that, if, 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 if the council doesn't own making decisions about service changes, then what we have is less people still trying to do the same amount of work. And, and that doesn't address any of the issues that we're talking about from, from a, what I think is a fair and reasonable work-life balance here, right? So I guess I'd like to, I'd like to ask, or, or perhaps encourage that, that that also be part of, of the conversation, that the council has to own, right? It, it's easy to sit up here and say, don't fill positions, right? That, that there's no heavy lifting in that. The elected officials need to also say, here are the service levels, you know, here, here are the specific pairings of these openings not being filled along with the services that will not be delivered, if, if, if that's what we decide to do to help fill the, the two point nine million dollar gap.
Yeah, what I hear you saying is you want to, you want to know what the impact is going to be, if we don't fill vacancies. And we can absolutely do that. That will be part of, and is part of our, what we do now to look at the justification for replacing positions. What's the impact if we don't replace these? And so we can absolutely gather that.
Yeah, or, or to say, here, these are, these are the openings, these are the half a million dollars in openings.
Right.
That we are estimating to, that, that we would realize to help fill the two point nine million dollar deficit. But, but what I want to understand is, what does the council need to own in terms of political decisions about service levels that need to be adjusted, or, or perhaps eliminated, in order to simply not just create a situation where we have less people still trying to do the same amount of work?
Exactly.
Okay?
Happy to do that.
Yeah, let me give you, I'll give you a, a good example of that. We worked very hard in community development to reduce the plan review time, and it, we reduced it from about twenty-nine days down to about eleven. Well, the problem is, if we don't fill some plan review spaces, then what happens? That review time will go back up again, and we'll have builders and developers who will begin to object to that. So that is the cost of maybe not filling a position, and we have to balance that out.
But Mr. Scudder told us earlier that there's not a, we don't have a lot of building permits coming through to begin with, right?
Well, that, that has its good side and its bad side.
The other thing I do want to highlight too, and I'm just, I think of the public safety positions, our swarm positions, especially in terms of fires. So what we've seen this year with Local Forty-Nine with the vacancies is offset by an increase in overtime, offset by an increase in workers' comp. So you are definitely smart to take a look at what's the overall impact if we don't fill those vacancies.
Good.
Alderman Mathie.
If you just want to hang out there for a second. So I had two questions on that section two point B as well, or two B. We talked about there's six hundred and fifty-six FTEs. How does the overtime that we're currently paying play into that number at all? Because, you know, if we have, we could say we have fewer people, but if we're paying even more money out in overtime, that doesn't do any good, right?
Well, I think you saw on the last slide, there was the overtime amount that we are all looking at cutting from our budgets for fiscal year nineteen. So reducing the overall FTE is obviously going, you know, we're going to have to balance that. So if you are still requiring the same level of service, you've got to have people to do that service.
Right.
Therefore, you're going to have overtime.
Okay.
You know, so it's a direct impact.
My second question is, is just for, and just to put the information out there, is, you know, we have contracts with our employees that say that they get annual cost of living increases. Do we have an average number of what that increase is each year?
They, some of our contracts not all have the longevity increases, and that is one item that we've worked with over this last twelve months, with our most recent negotiation season to reduce that. I can get those numbers, I don't have them off the top of my head. It, it varies amongst.
I just meant like an average, like we have six hundred and fifty-six employees that are going to get an average of one point nine seven across all of them, and that means that our salaries are going to go up two point four million dollars every year, you know, something like that, that big number. What's that macro number look like? Because one of the questions I get all the time is, well, why do we keep having a deficit over and over again if you're making cuts and doing stuff? And I said, well, the cost of doing business keeps going up at the same rate as everything else is. So, you know, I, I think that sometimes people lose focus on, on the fact that, you know, people, everything's getting more expensive as we go along, and we can't undo all the things. We can keep cutting stuff out, but things just keep getting more expensive, and there's nothing we can really do about that part of it.
Right.
Well, we're trying to. You guys are doing amazing work trying to keep some of those costs under control, but, you know, there's some of it we just can't get, avoid, you know?
Absolutely. I will, I can pull that together for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The other thing I do want to mention too, and you're making me think of these things as you're asking questions, you know, we are eighty percent unionized, right? So it's not as easy to say, cut this position, you know, there's a definite process that we have to go through for that, so just ask you to keep that in mind as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Helman.
Thanks. And I, I will have some questions for staff, but I'm going to write them out. I, I wanted to come back to business registration for a minute. My concern with having a registration fee is that it potentially would be a deterrent for, for new, for any business, new businesses or expanding businesses. Oh, I'm, I'm not keen on that idea. I, I would like to perhaps look at the, the one-time registration fee so that, or registration and maybe a fee with that, so that we have a better handle on, on the businesses, and as was brought out, that if there's, you know, if there's a call for service, fire, police, whatever, we know how to get ahold of the person that would be responsible for that.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And that, that's a good way that we can go down, and we can adjust these proposals that we've, we've got. We, we just threw one out as kind of a mark on the wall, and then we appreciate the fact that you adjust from it, because we want to find one that will be acceptable to most people.
And I would like to throw out, with respect to video gaming machines, that, um, video gaming is a form of recreation. If we did impose a, a terminal registration fee, an annual fee, that would offset Parks and Rec number almost exactly, Jay, I'm looking at Jay, because people consider video gaming a, a form of recreation. So if, if, if we wanted to impose.
You don't think it's a form of an addiction?
I'm not going there.
I don't think it would affect Parks and Rec, I would disagree with you, but go ahead.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is, if we, if we, if we had a registration fee, we could use that to offset what's lacking in Parks and Rec.
You're thinking like a dedicated fee for Parks and Rec?
Well, no, it wouldn't be Parks and Rec, but what, uh, what was Parks and Rec now? Hang on. Yeah, uh, yeah, hundred and one thousand. So if we had a video gaming, or video terminal fee, that would, that would wipe out the Parks and Rec.
Yes, and what I was suggesting, one thing you could do is you could tie it to that. We could say that the, the video gaming is specifically directed towards parks, and there are communities who do that.
Yeah.
Certain taxes pay for certain expenses.
The other comment I wanted to throw out was, we have a number of vacant buildings in our downtown. And I don't know if this is even legal or not, but some type of a, if a building is vacant for more than six months, and there's, there's no for sale sign or for rent sign in it, that there be some type of a, a fee, and every six months, that fee goes up to encourage people to perhaps take care of that building or get rid of it for a better use.
Well, I, I haven't seen that before. I'll look at it. Bob, have you seen such a thing as that?
We have a similar program for the rental, residential.
Go ahead, come back up.
I'm not that familiar with the program, but I think we have a, a similar program for delinquent properties, and, and we can look at that for commercial ones.
Okay. Because it just seems like if, if there were some inconvenience for the folks that have vacant buildings downtown in the form of hitting their pocketbook, that maybe we could see some movement on some of those. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Black.
I always like when comments start with, I'm not sure this is legal, but, piques my interest. Yeah. So I, I know we're talking a lot about costs and saving money, which is always important, and I'd be remiss if we didn't lose sight of what our economic engines are. And if you looked at, you know, in, in the airplane metaphor, you know, engines cost a lot of money to run, but they also get you from A to B. And we talked about the Aquatic Center, and I'd be remiss if we, we have a real opportunity here to do something good, do something long-term, that can be an engine of economic generation out in an area that needs it. out in an area that needs it. We've got people that are, could be driving down to our beautiful historic neighborhoods. I continue to yammer on about a wave pool. I know that that has met with some interest from the residents out there. I know Jay, we were out there doing that focus group a couple months back, a lot of residents came out in full support of a new aquatic center, whatever that might look like, and that may cost us some money, but it may also generate us, and will, it will generate us, revenue on the back end, so.
True.
We can't, it's very easy to get really finite about some of these things and get very concerned about cost, which we should, we can't overlook the engine of opportunity we could be creating.
Right, okay.
Mayor, I thank you very much.
At this point, we're down to 51 seconds, so go ahead.
This was great discussion, I hate to cut it off, but I've used up all the time you've given me.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. If you have the specific questions, if you would direct them to staff, obviously, as Mr. Rasmussen suggested, we could conceivably have a, you know, continue our tradition of having a Saturday budget workshop in addition to all the rest of this, but the more specific information, if we don't like the business registration fee, what we would also want to do is to have something that would replace that in this budget, and I think that's what the staff is looking for as they're putting a balanced budget together in the time that we're normally expecting it in, about a month from now, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So as specific as your questions may be, the more specific that your cuts can be, or new revenue sources could be, the better for our, as Alderman Sage said, "We've got real tough choices here," and he's absolutely right. And so we need to own up on these, and I think the more specific we can be, the more helpful to our staff, who's obviously worked very, very hard on all of this. Thank you all, Patty Lynn, Steve, all of our staff, Jeff Jurgens and others I know have, and Nicole, I could go through and thank all of you, but thank you for this very much. And we are out of time. At this point, we move on to item A8B, and we, this is supposed to be very short, five-minute presentation and five-minute council discussion, because it's a kind of a house cleaning chore.
That was an air on the agenda, I was supposed to have 45 minutes for my presentation.
I don't think so.
Mayor, Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Very quickly, this is, as, last November, we brought forward a four-party agreement to fund the SBDC, and we were the first out of the gate with that agreement. The other parties included Westland, BNEDC, the town and the city. The town subsequently opted to fund the program by a separate resolution, so they're not a party to the agreement. So we have gone back and revised the agreement, so now it's just a three-party agreement with BNEDC, IWU, and the city, and it's at the same funding level that the city committed to in the previous, back in November. The town opted for a different funding level, but that hasn't impacted the program. So we needed a new mechanism to authorize that funding, because the previous agreement authorized us only to make our payment after all the parties executed the agreement. So we still like the idea of an agreement for the accountability and the other clarity that it provides. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Again, just, is it fair for me to have characterized this as mainly a housekeeping chore?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve this seconded?
I was just going to make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Howman? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Painter, excuse me, seconded by Alderman Painter, please go ahead and vote.
Hug.
The motion carries eight to zero. There are any to announce. If you could let Alderman Schmidt back inside, please, that would be great. And then I will turn this over as soon as Alderman Schmidt comes back inside to our distinguished city manager for his comments.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I had three quick things to say. First of all, I will be out all next week on vacation, but I will be available by texting and by phone. In my absence, Fire Chief Moore will be the acting interim city manager, and feel free to beat up on him to your heart's content. The, the, the second thing is, at the last, about two meetings ago, we had the MOU for the Friends of the BCPA. It was pulled off the agenda and for further discussion, and the council had asked me to come back by the 1st of March with the full discussion of that MOU. I've been asked by the president of the Friends of the BCPA if we could extend that until the 1st of April, because she will be out of the country all during the month of March, and would like to be able to be here, I'm sorry, all the month of February, and she'd like to be here to participate in that, and since I promised you I'd get back to you by the 1st of March, I wanted to ask for an extension.
Just an amendment to that, Steve. Vicky Tilton did respond today in an email, I'm sure you haven't had a chance to see, to say that she really, even though she's gone, she would prefer that it not get slowed down, and that she figured you were reading her, her reaction, it was simply her, she's disappointed that she won't be here, but she doesn't want it slowed down at all.
Oh, okay, well, I did not see that. I'll go back and check with her again then, and I'll rescind my request. Thank you very much. And the third thing I did want to talk about was, one of the things, we have a possibility of a grant for the fire department, and one of the things we've done in the past, this is a rule of thumb, is always let the council know when we're going to apply for these grants, so that it does not come as a surprise to you, and if I could ask Chief Moore to give us a one-minute rundown on what that would be, so you won't be surprised by it.
Just real quickly, the assistance firefighter grants open up, and they're due to be submitted by February 2nd. We're looking at writing a grant for station generator. We have two stations, Station 3 and Headquarters both have generators that are almost 45 years old, and of course, getting hard to get parts for those, so about $150,000 apiece for these, so we're asking, we're writing a grant for $100,000 to, you know, assist for that. So we just wanted to be transparent, you know, to show you that we're working towards that goal.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Again, thank you so much, and all of you and all the staff for all the work you've put in for tonight's presentation, we very much appreciate it. The only thing that I have is just to clarify, we did have only one person tonight in public comment, but in the past, we've had hundreds dealing with the welcoming city ordinance. The December 18th meeting at the BCPA did have a majority of the council ask us, or direct the staff to write up a compromise resolution and bring it back. The staff, I have to say, also on this, has done their due diligence. We could have voted on it tonight, but there was some concern amongst a few of my colleagues out of deference. We have postponed it until February 12th, so February 12th we'll be at the BCPA, that hopefully will be the time where, whether it's voted up or down, it's voted on, and that will be three weeks from this evening, so certainly stay tuned. And I do apologize that for some of you, it's been a seven to nine-month process, and some of you did, either on the council or on, you know, in the community, expect it to be voted on tonight. We can't always do that for a variety of reasons. So that's the only thing that I have, so stay tuned. I can't guarantee, the council would have to make that determination if we want to extend public comment. I think we've had quite a bit of public comment on it, but that's just my opinion at this point, but the meeting will be at the BCPA, and that presumably will be the final action regardless of the outcome on February 12th, and I turn it over to Alderman, and I'm going to, excuse me, start with Alderman Howman.
Thanks. I want to echo what Scott and I think one or two other Aldermen said, and that is that for me, looking at the numbers, the way they've been presented, although it's a lot of paper, makes so much more sense than two three-ring binders in one Saturday morning. So thank you very much for the work that's been done, and for trying to make this as easy and comprehensible as possible, so. Steve and staff, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that staff put in on that.
Alderman, Black.
Thank you. And I just wanted to give my colleagues and the public an update. Beginning of November, I submitted Alderman's request form, signed by a number of my colleagues regarding stopping when you call 911 on your cell phone in Bloomington, that it doesn't have to get transferred to Bloomington Dispatch. And I met with Steve, we've had a couple conversations, and we're going to be holding on that for the time being, because there may be a next-generation system that comes out that would solve that problem, and it wouldn't be wise to adjust everything before making another system update in a year or so. Although in my conversations with Steve, this is a great topic for a joint meeting with Normal and the county, because all these partners are impacted by this, and I consider this to be a very high public safety issue, because this is seconds and minutes and time that's wasted having to transfer phone calls, and fewer and fewer people have landlines, so this needs to be addressed at some point in the very near future. But just wanted to give that update to my colleagues who signed off on that Alderman's request form, and it's in the pipeline, so thank you, Steve.
Alderman, Burgess.
Three quick things. Number one, thank you to Alderman Howman for working with the citizens on the ad hoc committee. I really appreciate all the time and effort that clearly has gone into this. I'm sure you had many spirited conversations and have enjoyed looking at your proposals for how we can improve things in the budget, so thank you very much for your efforts. Number two, I've been meaning to mention this for a while, and it's probably been on the agenda now for months, but the new section on community development impact, to me, is very valuable, and I appreciate that having been put in there. Again, this is not a new thing, but I hadn't mentioned how much I appreciate that inclusion in our agendas. And number three, and this, I think, is a really new and novel idea, and I think this is what our community really needs, and it's a shame that no one else has come up with it before, but we really need a wave pool. I mean, I would have thought Scott would have been all over that, but, you know, missed opportunity, I guess, but anyway, all right, thanks.
Alderman, Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Sage and Alderman Matthew. I was hoping I was going to call you first. I'm just following that Pangraph editorial, sorry.
So Scott, do I understand you have a birthday coming up, or had one?
It's a little bit a ways away.
Well, I'm a little premature.
So, so, so the old adage that is probably apropos for you would be, it's not the years, it's the mileage, right?
That's right. I didn't say that one.
That's right.
The other thing, the other thing I wanted...
Some of us have both.
Yeah, and your odometer, I'm sure, is spinning a lot faster than others your age, Scott, so it's probably appropriate. The other thing I wanted to ask about was just an update on where we're at with the RFP, process for the city manager search. We had laid out a process back in October at the committee, the whole meeting, where I think that staff had suggested that we'd probably be working with that in January, and so I had sent a...
For a variety of reasons, because of things that we thought, that some of them did come out like this one, we will be discussing it in executive session in our next meeting.
Why would it be executive session?
Oh, oh, it's not executive? Oh, I'm sorry. It will be discussed at the next meeting.
It will be on our agenda for February 12th?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. I should have, should have mentioned that as well, yes, because you did ask me about that, I think, earlier. I am remiss. Alderman, Matthew.
I just want to echo everybody, thank you to staff for putting all this information together, and for any of you in the public who have not had enough fun yet talking about budget, Alderman Howman and I are hosting a town hall meeting tomorrow night at the Breckenridge Homeowners Association Clubhouse, which is at the corner of White Eagle and Streeg Road. There's not, like, Google Maps does not take you, Streed, I'm sorry?
Stride.
Stride.
That's a really nice photo.
Yeah, it's a good picture. Those are both good pictures.
I'm glad you're in my neighborhood, thank you.
If Google Maps doesn't want to take you to the right place, you can search for the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, and it's right across the street to the south. So they're right across the street from each other, and actually, there's going to be more parking at the church. The church has said it's okay to park there, so if you want to ask questions of us publicly, we will answer everything that we can, and then get staff help for everything we can, so, thanks.
Thank you so much. At this point, is, wow, it's been a long time since you've gone this late. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Very emphatically by Alderman Howman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman. Scott Black, all the favor signifies saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.